Welcome to the May 14th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. In accordance with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, master general law, chapter 30a, section 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, this meeting, the May 14, 2020, public meeting of the zoning board of appeals is physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. There are alternative public access measures put in place for this meeting. As always, it's available streamed on FCTV either online or the local TV channel. And real time public comment can be addressed to the zoning board of appeals utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the chair via the chat function. Submitted text questions will be read into the record at the appropriate points in the meeting. Zoom login instructions are as follows. It's www.falmouthmass.us/zba. And there's a link there to start the Zoom app. So again, we can address public comment via the Zoom chat when appropriate in the meeting. I'll introduce the board at this time. My name is TJ Hury. I'm the chair of the board. With us tonight is Ken Foreman, who is the vice chairman, Bob Dugan, who is the board's clerk. Ed Van Kuren will be meeting up with us momentarily. He is a full voting member. Scott Zalinski is here with us. He is also a full voting member. Mary Berry, who is an associate member, and James Moore, who is an associate member as well. We also have Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, Ashley DeMello, who is our recording secretary for tonight. And I just want to mention Falmouth IT department, Thomas Cox and Adriana Cantano are assisting us as well. And also our friends at FCTV who are helping us stream to everyone tonight. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying zoning bylaws for the town. And we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws, which have been approved by town meeting and the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. All decisions that the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and from the public and also to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the file, such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comments should only be directed at the project itself. We also ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. A public comment can include an opinion in favor or in opposition, or might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. And again, to provide public comment, go to the Zoom app, which is accessible via There's a link there for the Zoom app. You can put your comments into the chat function and we will address any public comment at the appropriate time during the hearings. The board will then either close or continue the hearing when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision. By motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. And the alternative, we may continue the hearing to a future date and time. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. As for board discussion and decision, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and make a motion to deny or approve would be made and voted upon. The motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a super majority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote, such as a three to two vote, would be a failure to carry and results in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. So turning to our agenda for the night, we do have public comment. This public comment period is meant for anything that is not on the agenda tonight. So if there is any public comment, go ahead and type away in the Zoom chat. And if anything pops up, we can address that. As for the hearings, we have four continuations. We also have four new hearings and there are a few items on our open meeting agenda. So once again, public comment, this is just meant for anything that is not on the agenda. So if anyone out there has any sort of public comment for something not on the agenda, type away in the Zoom chat function and we can address it if anything pops up. But in the meantime, we can go ahead with our hearings as scheduled.
So Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to take tonight's items out of order, both new hearings and continuations. This will be tonight's order, starting with the new hearings. One will be 2420 Flower, 55 Blair Lane. Two will be 2120 Mueller, 91 Central Ave. Three will be 19-20 Mannix and Shields at 10 Crown Avenue. And four will be Bradshaw Trustee's, eight Elysian Ave. That will be the new hearings which will go first. Then we'll do the continuations, starting with application 9-20 Hibbett Trustee, eight Mass Road. Actually, I'm sorry. Number five will be Chevalier, 426 Menard Road, application 1-20. Then application 9-20 Hibbett Trustee, eight Mass Road. Then Cacciodorian Bayless, application 63-19, and 87-19, 18 Cashmere Drive. And then we will end with the Falmouth Housing Trust, application 3-20, lots nine and 10, Pam's Way, East Falmouth.
Okay, so that's a motion to take the hearings out of order. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
By Scott. Roll call, vote. James?
James Morsai.
Ken?
Ken Foreman, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed? You're on mute, Ed.
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Thank you, Ed. And TJ Hury, aye. So we will be taking the hearings out of order as Bob stated. So up first, we have application 24-20 Flower, 55 Blair Lane in West Falmouth. And either Tom or Adriana, I believe Attorney Flower will be representing this.
So application number 24-20, being all persons deemed affected by the board of appeals under section 11 of chapter 48 of the Mass General Laws. You are hereby notified that Kevin P. Flower II and Megan G. Flower of Falmouth, Mass have applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-38G of the Code of Falmouth to allow a third garage bay on subject property known as 55 Blair Lane, West Falmouth. For referrals.
Do anything. It just says.
Engineering. The only comment is this appears to be the addition of a garage door on a previously approved garage, includes no site work, so they have no additional requirements. Assessors, no comment. Planning, no comment. And fire department, no comment. And there is one letter of support. And that is from Graham Cooper, and he lives at 51 Blair Lane, West Falmouth, and he has no objections to the application.
And the voting numbers on this will be the regular full voting numbers. Attorney Flower?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Flower. And for a change, I'm here not in a professional capacity, but rather in a personal one. I'm here tonight on behalf of myself and my wife, Megan Flower, as we are the owners of 55 Blair Lane. We're in the midst of building a new home for our family and in doing so are looking to construct a three car garage, which is just slightly over 900 square feet. 55 Blair Lane is part of a six lot subdivision to cul-de-sac at the northern end of Blair Lane, on the north side of Route 28. The lot's just over 40,000 square feet and it's in the residential B zoning district. We're currently in mid construction. And the addition of a third garage door does not affect the size or the design of the garage or the structure. I don't often discuss my personal life in front of the board, but I'm actually the proud parent of four children, ranging in ages from two to eight. And we're building a new house to accommodate our family and also to provide some additional space for our aging parents. We anticipate that we'll need this garage space. The proposed garage is 920 square feet, which is just slightly over the threshold of 900 square feet that requires a special permit. There's no standards that are really set forth in this provision in the bylaw, so we have to look at the standards of 240-216. And essentially, the question becomes, does the proposed use have an adverse effect which overbalances the beneficial effect for the neighborhood and to the town? And I would posit that there's really no adverse effects to this proposal. Again, we're not changing the size of the garage, not changing the layout of the approach or the driveway. It's just the addition of a third bay as opposed to not. It's, I hope it's as simple as that. That said, I'd be happy to address any questions that the board may have.
Very good. And just so everyone knows, if anyone has any public comment for this project, go ahead and type it in the webinar chat on Zoom. When the time comes, we can address any sort of comment that the public has. We will turn it to board questions now, though. You see here. James, any questions?
I have no questions.
Ken?
Really just being nosy, Kevin, but why didn't you put the garage door in at the beginning?
We didn't want to delay the permitting process, so we figured we could. We'd have been happy building it without the third garage door. We wanted to get going with the building permit application process and figured that if we didn't get the special permit, then we just wouldn't do it.
So this house is actually under construction? You're not living?
No, we're not living in it. Not at all. We're in the midst of it. We started framing on it this week, actually, but the foundation's done.
Thanks.
Scott?
No, I'm good. Questions?
Mary?
No comments.
Bob?
No questions.
Ed?
I had the same question that Ken did. No, there's no questions.
Okay. And no question me even. I'm not seeing any questions on the webinar chat. So how would the board like to proceed?
So motion to close?
Second.
Okay, motion to close made by Bob and second by Ken. Roll call, vote. Ken?
Ken Foreman, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
James?
James Morsai.
And TJ Hury, aye. And how would the board like to proceed?
A motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion to approve by Bob and Scott seconded that. Findings?
They'll be adding a garage door to create a third garage bay. It will not be adding any square footage. It won't change the bedroom count, won't change the grating, or won't change the roof. There was a neighbor that had written in in support.
Meets 240-216.
Yep, 240-216, 240-38G. Increases the utilization.
Anything else for findings?
No opposition at the hearing was voiced.
I know it's not really part of the bylaw criteria, but I always like to know why they're requesting the third garage bay. So it's due to family size, I suppose, and the anticipated use of the property.
Eight years, you're gonna need that third bay.
Yeah, the fourth. Anything else for findings?
No.
All right, conditions?
Further revised site plan dated April 8, 2020.
Anything else for conditions?
No, but just note that the plan reflects the mentions on the structure and includes the stamp of Matthew Pasta of PLS.
Okay. Any last minute findings or conditions, I suppose? All right, seeing none. And once again, there's nothing in the webinar chat. So the motion to approve with conditions was made by Bob and seconded by Scott. We'll go to a roll call vote. Ken? Can you with us? He looks frozen.
He froze.
Looks like it.
Must be cold out on the deck.
And there he is, he just popped out. Noreen or Thomas, any suggestions as to how to handle the hearing right now? Nope, he's coming back. I can see him. Ken, you're back with us. You're on mute. That's all right. So we'll, no worries. We'll call a roll call vote again to approve the project with conditions. Motion was made by Bob and seconded by Scott. Ken? I think it just happened again. All right, we'll stand by, I suppose, wait for him to come back.
Okay.
All right.
Hopefully, we'll see. I'm having my internet cut now.
Ken, let's get your vote in while we still can.
Okay, Ken Foreman, aye.
All right, Bob.
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
And TJ Hury, aye.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. Okay, up next, we have application 21-20 Mueller, 91 Central Ave in the east Falmouth.
So Bob has recused from this hearing, so substituting for him as clerk. I'm Zoom clerking.
Okay.
So we have an application by Michael A. Mueller of East Falmouth, applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-13 and 241-62 of the Code of Falmouth to allow a home-based landscape business on subject property known as 91 Central Ave, East Falmouth, Mass. And we have Mike in there. For referrals. Engineering has said no proposed site work, so they have no comment. They have a driveway permit on file from 2019. Board of Health has no issues unless plumbing is proposed, but we have notation that there will be no plumbing. And Board of Health has said that it is outside their jurisdiction. That was from conservation, sorry, outside the jurisdiction. We have nine form letters of support and we have four individually written letters. The first is from Tommy Cicorillo. Please excuse me if I've mispronounced his name, from 24 Mary Manuel Way. He says he has lived off Central Ave since 1992 and he drives by the property daily. He says it's been fun to see Mike and Sam transform what was a dated farmhouse and overgrown lot into one of the more attractive properties in our neighborhood. Their hard work and vision have created a unique and beautiful place for the young family. The layout and natural screening make for a discreet setting, and Mike is a respected professional who I am confident will do the right thing. It's important to support the many small businesses in our community and the Mueller's are easy to get behind. I respectfully request that you grant this special permit. Next letter is from Carol A. McAlvin. And she has said, please be advised that I have no objections, in caps, to granting a special permit to Michael A. Mueller to allow a home-based landscape business at 91 Central Ave, East Falmouth. Mike has done much to improve the property and continues to do so. He is very aware of his neighbors and his business has not brought any issues with me. Mike and his family are an asset to our neighborhood. We have a letter from Eileen Perry. She says, my name is Eileen Perry and I reside at 87 Central Avenue in East Falmouth, next door to Mike and Samantha Mueller's property. I have lived in East Falmouth for approximately 80-plus years. I am writing this letter in support of Mike and Samantha Mueller's application of a home-based service landscape business at 91 Central Avenue. They have made significant improvements to the property and have been a positive addition to the neighborhood. They have gone out of their way to minimize any noise or disturbances. The equipment is neatly stored out of sight in the back of the property. I have no complaints regarding landscaping business and urge the board to pass their application. They have been and are great neighbors. And the last letter is from George and Ruth Spivey. They say, growing up in the poor Pine Barrens of South Jersey, I was taught and learned the essence of good living from the working class of all colors, my teachers in my two-room school, and the old folks of the church. Honesty, hard work, respect, help for others, especially the elderly. Fortunately, my neighbors across the street at 91 Central Ave, Michael and Samantha Mueller, their two little girls and their dog Nora, have displayed neighborly qualities, especially respect and hard work. What I do see is a manicured lawn edged by a Belgian block driveway and highlighted by a fire pit surrounded by flagstone and Adirondack chairs. What I do not see because of a natural and planted tree line are landscape equipment or trucks. Do not hear are loud exhaust noises or smell or exhaust fumes. All the efforts by the Mueller's to maintain a residential setting have eliminated any evidence of a landscape business operating at 91 Central Avenue. The Mueller's landscape business with its impressive groundwork and separated business equipment and vehicles is a very positive addition and asset to the community. When the town of Falmouth inspects the Mueller site, it will appreciate the improvements to and enhancements of the property. The Mueller's are great neighbors and have enhanced the neighborhood. We are in total support of their application for a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. And let's see. That is the letters and referrals into the file.
Thank you, Noreen. And since Bob has recused himself, I will appoint James as a voting number on this. And Mr. Mueller? You are muted right now, but whenever you're ready, feel free.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I would first like to thank Ashley DeMello and the staff and the office for all their help and guidance in preparing for this application. They helped make something complicated and confusing not so bad, especially during these unprecedented times. My name is Mike Mueller and I am the owner of 91 Central Ave. I live at the property with my wife Samantha, our two daughters, Hayley, who is five, and Natalie, who is a year and a half, as well as our dog Nora. My wife and I were both born and raised here and are both town and Falmouth employees, she with the school department and I'm on the fire department. I also run a small landscaping business, Cloverfield Property Care, which I operate from our property. Property consists of approximately 86,400 square feet of land in an agricultural B zoning district. We purchased the property in 2017 and have been slowly undertaking renovations and improvements since that time, which includes approximately 75 plants strategically placed for screening and along the property lines. I am before you this evening to request a special permit allowing me to run my business from the location as a home-based service business. Under section 240-162 of the zoning bylaws, allows for home occupations under certain circumstances and requires a special permit from this board for home-based service businesses. Further, section 240-13 defines a home-based service business as a home occupation where the resident is the domicile and owner of the property, excuse me, owner of the business. The business employs no more than two non-family individuals on the premises and sets forth a number of permissible business types, of which landscaping is included. In my case, I live at the property. I am the operator of the landscape business. I typically have only one or two employees working at any one time and the work does not occur on the property. Therefore, this meets the definition of a home-based service business. The proposal before you meets all the requirements of section 240-162 F3A through E. The provisions of 240-162 F3 allows the board to permit up to four company vehicles on the premises, so long as they are kept on a driveway, in a garage, or within a screened area in the side or rear yard that effectively screens the vehicles from view. As you can see from the site plan, there is a screened in area towards the middle of the lot where the commercial vehicles are kept. There are only two vehicles for the business and some small trailers, but one of the vehicles is also my primary means of transportation. Also note that the trailers of less than 18 feet are not considered vehicles for the purpose, and all my trailers are smaller than 18 feet. The exterior storage is well below the allowable 10% threshold, is not within 30 feet of any off-premise dwelling, is not within five feet of any side yard line, and is not in the front yard. I have one full-time employee and two part-time employees. Typically, there are only two employees working on any given day, and the only visits to the property are typically at the beginning and end of the day. Since the start of the COVID pandemic, only my full-time employee has been working. As stated in the application, the hours of operation are generally 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and all equipment is generally used off of the property. Property is accessed off of Central Avenue and the proposed use does not generate any new traffic. We generally leave in the morning and return at the end of the day with only infrequent trips to the property between those times. The access to the site is more than adequate and safely accommodate the traffic. This project further meets all the requirements of section of 240-216, including adequacy and suitability of the site. The property is about two acres and the storage area is well screened from any abutters and the public way. There is no impact on traffic flow and safety. I believe there are no negative impact on the neighborhood visual character. I believe there are no negative impact on the neighborhood visual character, no impact on sewage, no impact on utilities and no not impacting of affordable housing. We have spoken to many of our many neighbors and all direct abutters to ensure any issues they may have were addressed accordingly and have submitted letters or signatures of support from many of them. I believe that I have demonstrated that we have met all the necessary requirements for this special permit and would ask the board grant it. I would be glad to take any questions and I appreciate the board's consideration and time on this matter.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mueller. We'll turn it to board questions and once again, if anyone out there from the public does have a question, comment, or a concern, you can type it into the Zoom webinar chat and we will address that shortly. We do ask that, and I think I forgot to mention this earlier, just type in your full name and address for our records. So with that, we'll turn it to board questions. Scott, anything?
No questions, but I have a brief, a brief comment. I was, I was very surprised at how cleverly that was laid out back there because it, it was totally masked all the way in and that offset lollipop with the wagon wheel cutouts for it was pretty impressive. I, I was, I was shocked at how much room and how well it was put together.
Okay. James?
My questions have been answered about the screening. I took a ride by my motorcycle and had to go by twice because I couldn't find it or didn't think I could find it. So everything's very well screened. Thank you.
You're good. Mary?
No comments.
Ed?
Yes, well done and I have no comment.
Ken?
Everyone else has addressed all, all the issues.
And my only question, Mr. Mueller, would be that it appears that the only sort of access to the property is off of Central Ave. It's not off of Poly Ave or the, the rear street and I don't have that in front of me.
That's correct. There's no access on Peola and none on Old Manot. And it's kind of my, my security system because you have to go by my house in order to get back there. So no, no plans, anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any follow-up questions from the board? Not seeing any and I don't see anything webinar, but if anything pops up, I'll be sure to mention that. So how would the board like to proceed?
Make a motion to approve.
We'd, we'd have to close first.
Oh, yeah. I made a motion to close.
Sounds good.
I'll second. Second.
So motion to close, that was made by Scott and second by James. Roll call vote. James?
James, more side.
Scott's Linsky.
Ed?
Yeah, Jack, you're an I.
Ken?
Ken Forman, I.
Mary?
Mary, Barry, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So the hearing is closed. And now how would the board like to proceed?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion approved made by Scott and I will give the second to Ed. Findings.
So I guess this is the part where the clerk normally tells you that they have demonstrated compliance with 240-13, which is home-based service business and 240-162, which is home occupation.
Very good.
We have some 13 letters in support and no opposition.
All right. And we'll include the hours of operation. I think they said seven to five. And.
I think they said outside time was 7:00 PM. I think he said, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, that you normally finish at 5:00. But until 7:00 PM?
That's, that's correct. Typically, we're done at, at 5:00. If the day runs a little bit long, we're, we're, we're done by 7:00.
Is that Monday through Saturday or Monday through Friday?
Usually Monday through Friday. My wife doesn't like when I work on the weekend, but if we have like a rain day that messes up something, some, we wouldn't work on the rain day and we'd work on the, on the Saturday instead, but not Sunday.
So if we're going to have a condition, I think we need that.
Monday through Saturday is reasonable. Any, any other findings?
No opposition during the hearing.
You do have very good screening at the property.
Definitely is.
There's no noise generated.
Could add setbacks, have been complied with, the parcels, two acres. That's a, that's a large lot.
And we'll make reference to the, the equipment on site, the two trucks and one he uses as a everyday vehicle and the.
Trailers are within 18 feet.
It's in an AG zone. I think that's important, especially given the fact that it's a landscaping business.
You've got one full-time and two part-time employees and he's utilizing his own driveway as access.
All right. Anything else for findings? Conditions? Suppose we could say per plans. Think he provided a sketch, least. Applause plan, rather.
Operating hours, Monday through Saturday, 7:00 to 7:00 P.
Wouldn't you just make the conditions, the, the conditions of the bylaw?
Be better.
That sounds good. And regarding the screening, it is pretty well screened, but I'd like to see that maintained in the event that anything dies off. Anything else for conditions? All right. Not hearing any. We will make a, we'll go to vote then. So the motion to approve was made by Scott and second by Ed. Roll call vote, James?
James, more side.
Scott?
Scott's Linsky, I.
Ed?
Yeah, Jack, you're an I.
Ken?
Ken Forman, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. Mr. Mueller, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you all very much.
Up next, we have application 19-20, Mannix Shields, 10 Crown Ave and Falmouth.
So application 19-20, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 48 or the Mass General laws, you are hereby notified that John A. Mannix Jr. and Carmel A. Shields of Chestnut Hill, Mass, have applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for modification of Special Permit 66-88 pursuant to Sections 240-3C and 240-69E of the Code of Falmouth to raise and reconstruct the existing cottage on subject property known as 10 Crown Avenue, Falmouth, Mass. Referrals, Engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Crown Avenue and Forest Avenue are for public rights of way in this area. No alterations are proposed in the right of way. Any changes with the right of way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project was not directing any stormwater runoff to public property or abutters of public rights of way. We recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of dry wells, rain garden, or other stormwater infiltration measure for the new roof area at a minimum. We recommend the following condition also be included. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per Section 99-1. A fixing of legible numbers required and time limit for compliance. Six, per town addressing standards, the main building will remain 10 Crown Avenue. The cottage address will be 10A Crown Avenue. Included with this referral is a copy of the address change for the cottage, please provide to the applicant. And seven, is we recommend the board add a condition that requires the addition of dry wells, rain garden, or stormwater infiltration measure for the cottage at a minimum. From the water department, there's a water meter pit that needs to be eliminated, moved inside. Fire department, no comment. Planning, no comment. Assessors. They have something listed there, I think as number 41 Forest Ave, so that might have been the, they'll have to change that, which is an address change. There is a special permit on file from 1988. It was for the larger dwelling of that foundation and remodeling. There is no record with year of the second dwelling or when it was constructed. Health department doesn't have any issues with the sample. They did include in the file a lock comparison worksheet. And that's all we have right now.
And the voting members will be the regular voting members. Attorney Clower?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Ahmed Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth and I represent the applicants, John A. Mannix Jr. and Carmel A. Shields. Before I begin, there are some other members of the team that I would ask that we bring on as panelists. Specifically, there would be Tim Santos, Susan McCabe, and Jill Newbauer. And I believe Jill's name is just Jill in the attendees list. Great. Thank you very much. As I said, I do represent the applicants, John Mannix and Carmel Shields. They are the owners of 10 Crown Avenue. 10 Crown Avenue is located at the highest point of Falmouth Heights and it's in the middle of a dense, largely seasonal residential community. It's on a lot of 4,287 square feet and it's located within the residential B zoning district. Existing on the site are two dwellings. The front or the main house is a three-bedroom and it's Victorian in style and appearance. It was formerly part of the Oak Crest Inn. On the rear of the lot is the smaller detached two-bedroom cottage, which is the subject of this hearing. The cottage has a number of existing non-conformities. It's a non-conformant front yard setback being 16.4 feet where 25 is required. Its side yard setback is 2.5 feet with 10 is required. The lot coverage by structure is 35.9%, where up to 20% is allowed by right and up to 25% is allowed with a special permit. The existing ridge height of the cottage is 13 feet 9 inches and the existing ridge height of the main house is 23 feet 3 inch. The applicants are seeking to raise and rebuild the, the existing cottage and to replace it with one that's more in line with the main house. They're not adding any bedrooms and in fact, they're actually eliminating a bedroom from, from the cottage. So it'll only be a one-bedroom dwell, uh, structure at this point. They're not creating any new non-conformities, nor are they increasing any of the existing non-conformities. The proposed cottage is similar in style to the Victorian main house, as well as many of the nearby properties. Compatible and appropriate with the nature of the area and it does actually result in a slightly reduced footprint. As I mentioned, the bedroom count does decrease in the cottage from two to one. As to the non-conformities, the side yard, side yard setback is slightly improved from 2.5 feet to 2.8 feet. And there's also minimal improvement to the lot coverage by structure, which goes from 35.9% to 35.5% and the lot coverage by structures, paving and parking, which goes from 62% down to 61.9%. I realize these aren't much of decreases, but they are decreases nonetheless. The resulting ridge height is 19 feet 3 inches of the proposed cottage. As Mr. Dugan mentioned, there was a 1988 special permit and that special permit was issued under an old section of the bylaw, which the updated section is essentially 24066, I believe it's the, but it allows for the alteration of existing non-conforming use of two or more dwellings on a single lot as of January 1, 1981, where they had not previously been made for habitation. And that was allowed and one of the findings there was that the two dwellings had existed and had existed for a number of years since it was 1988. So it met that 1981 threshold. As such, we're seeking to modify that special permit under Sections 243C and 24069E. Section 243C allows for pre-existing non-conforming structures to be changed by special permit, provided that they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board is asked to consider the standards of 240-216 and whether or not the alterations create a new dimensional non-conformity, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. In this case, there is no new non-conformity that's being created. The existing non-conforming front yard setback will be unchanged and there are improvements to the side yard setback, the lot coverage by structure and the lot coverage by structures, paving and parking. We did prepare a lot comparison worksheet, GIS was up and running. And we looked at the 45 nearby properties within a 300-foot radius of the site. Of those 45 properties, 21 have larger growth building areas, 25 have larger footprints and 23 have higher percentage of lot coverage by structure. All of which to say, this proposal is very in line and in character with the neighborhood. There should be no effective shadow and similar in size and style to the surrounding properties. There's no impact on views and vistas from public ways. There's no effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments as we're actually reducing of the bedroom count there. We have been for, been before the historical commission as this property is on the list of historically significant structures and the board unanimously approved for a waiver with the demolition delay bylaw. And the engineering department has submitted a referral in which they noted that they're spoken with the architect and engineer and they have no issues with the plans. In this case, there's no detriment to the project. There's really no detriment at all and certainly none relative to the existing structure. There's no adverse effects. We reduce existing non-conformities and we don't create any new non-conformities. Further meets the standards of 240-216. Based on this information, I would ask that the board grant the special permit and I'd be happy to address any questions you might have at this time.
Return to Clower. And then once again, if the, anyone's out there who has any questions, comments, type it into the webinar chat. Please provide your full name and address and we will get to it when the time comes. Board questions right now? James, anything?
Good question.
Scott?
Attorney Clower, does the cottage, the present cottage is, does it suffer any structural deficiencies as it stands right now?
Yeah, the foundation of the existing cottage is, is really in terrible shape. I do have some photos I can show that show that the, the foundation's really kind of a jury rate together. It's held up by bricks and two-by-four stacked on their side and a two-by-six jimmyed up against the, you know, the, the. A jury rate together, it's held up by bricks and two by four stacked on their side and a two by six jimmyed up against the, you know, the, the, uh. This is why I'm not a builder, uh, against the cross beams to, to support the existing foundation. So the existing foundation's in really terrible condition. Um, and i- if you, if you're curious, Mr. Blinsky, we certainly can show most of that effect.
Um, and understanding that, that, that cottage and its nonconformities have been protected due to the fact that it's pre-existing nonconforming, right? It might, the changes in the, uh, the decrease in the nonconformities are minimal, minimal. And, and it, and it, it's a large, it's a large lot coverage over in there. You said you're decreasing it to one bedroom. Were there any other ideas to, to, uh, shrink that at all to help with that lot coverage?
I, I don't think that you can shrink it very much in.
Very minimal.
Yeah, I, I understand, uh, I, I think the issue is that, you know, any decrease in, in the, in the footprint of that reduces the functionality of that cottage by, by a substantial margin. It's, it's a small structure to begin with. And to make it even smaller, you know, reduces the ability to use it with any sort of meaning, in, in any sort of meaningful manner.
Okay, no more questions, thank you, sir.
You Scott, Mary, any questions?
I have no questions.
Ted?
None.
Ken?
Uh, so, uh, Kevin, the, the current cottage is thirteen feet high? And I believe that was your, but the plan showed in what your testimonies.
Yep, I believe the existing cottage is thirteen feet, nine inches.
And you're going to nineteen feet, is that correct?
That's correct.
What's, and what do you need the extra height for?
Well, the rationale for that, and, and I'll, I'll let Jill Newbauer speak to this, um, because I'm, I'm stepping into a territory that's not really mine. But my understanding is that the idea there was to match the roof lines of the Victorian style house. That butts to make it more in line, because as of right now, it's really disjointed, you have this very. You have the small cottage that really doesn't look like it belongs with the Victorian style house next door. But, but Jill, I'd be happy to see this to you as to the rationale for the roof lines.
Let me just add one other part to that question, is there a loft, is there? Or is it just open cathedral, or what, what's?
There, there is, there, there is a loft space in, in there, but it's, uh, it's open to the floor below. Um, it's accessed by a stair, uh, by a ladder, essentially ladder stair going up.
Yes, I'm happy to address the height of the ridge and the height of the sidewall. The, the existing cottage doesn't have the proper clearance between the floor frame and the grade. And so with the first thing we do is establish our floor framing above the existing grade with eight inches of clear foundation. And then we have a minimum sidewall height to clear in six foot eight exterior door with the header above that. And then we felt that it was essential to bring the cottage into the Victorian architectural language and vernacular that, you know, the existing cottage is so unfortunate. In its massing and its character, and that it's a ranch roof. Um, four simple walls, no detail, no articulation, and so it doesn't fit with the existing house. Or the other Victorian vernacular homes in the area. And so what we did was we matched the pitch of the existing house, which is also consistent with the other roofs on Crown Circle. And that by its very nature gives it the Victorian architecture, but it does raise the ridge. Just because of that architectural consistency. So we're cathedral over the little sitting area, and there's a little micro kitchenette. And then over the bedroom, we have just a tiny loft with a little ship's ladder that goes up to that.
Okay. Uh. And also I s- now, I don't, I can't tell if this is on the existing or the proposed. There's a concrete pad. For, looks like for air conditioning unit that is like within, looks like it's within just a few inches of the, uh, sideline, is that correct?
Yes, that's, um, an existing pad, and I actually think we're going to be hanging the condenser off the sidewall with the new mini split. It'll be shallow depth and hanging off the sidewall, and that we won't need that concrete pad on the ground.
Okay, so that might be. Uh.
I think that could be an improvement.
Improvement in terms of the side of the setback, I guess the pad probably counts, doesn't count as a, I don't know, it's a counter structure.
I don't know.
I, I don't believe it does.
Yeah. But anyway, it, you will have more clearance. In, in reality.
Yes, that's right, that's right, and those, the nice thing about the new mini split condensers is they are much shallower, they're not the rectangular cubes that needed more space, they're a tighter condition, so that should be an improvement.
Okay, those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Bob, anything?
So, when, when I look at the plan, Kevin, it, so it appears that the entire front fence and the gate and most of the. That driveway apron, the cobblestone apron is all in town road layout.
Yeah, this was, uh, brought to our attention this afternoon. Um, so looking at the plan, that is correct.
And then on the side that Jill had just mentioned where the condenser is. It looks like the fence on that side is actually on the adjacent property.
Uh, I think there might be a very minor encroachment for a portion of it.
So it seems it's the whole part that actually goes by the cottage itself? Or the main, I guess the main dwelling, no, that is the cottage, isn't it?
Yep, no, that, that's the cottage. I don't think there'd be any issue with, with relocating that.
So my only question is if you relocate, I, I would assume you'd want to relocate the fence onto your site. If you do, I doubt the condenser can go there. On the E C.
It's going to hang on the sidewall, Bob, so that it won't be sitting on the ground.
My question is if, if you move the fence in on that site now, will you have enough room?
Yes, I think we do because of the, um. Yes, we do because of the thinness of the mini split condenser. Of how shallow it is.
And then I had this.
I was just gonna say that that fence won't survive digging the footing for the new cottage, and so when it's reinstalled, it would be installed properly on the, on the property line, on the property line.
So if, so where that, so that, so you're, you're two and a half feet from the property lines, that's a good thing to go into, so how do you protect that property line then? If the fence isn't going to survive the construction, how do you protect that from the butter next door?
That's something that construction means and methods would establish, and depending upon the soils, we're just going for a shallow condition. And so the contractor would be responsible for not disturbing.
And, and what is the loft being used for?
It doesn't have a particular intention, it's just that we didn't want that high of a ceiling condition in the bedroom or the bathroom. And so we just tapped it so the bedroom was a little cozier and it created a little. You know, you could throw Christmas decorations up there. Or, you know, it's not a legal access, it's just a ship's ladder to get up there.
And then I guess a question to Mr. Clower, so the, the previous, um, special permit dealt with the main dwelling, have you submitted anything that showed that the cottage predates nineteen fifty-nine?
Uh, I don't believe it actually needs to predate nineteen fifty-nine under this specific section of the bylaw. The section of the bylaws, two forty sixty-six, uh. It is two forty sixty-six D, um, which says no more than one dwelling per lot. Uh, an existing nonconforming use of two or more structures on a single lot as of one January nineteen eighty-one. Not previously used for year-round habitation may, may not be altered, restructured, extended, or changed structurally, except by special permit from the zoning board of appeals. Year-round habitation is deemed to be an extension of use. And this specific special permit did, uh, confirm that there was an existing nonconforming use of two or more structures on a single lot. As of one January nineteen eighty-one, so what we're seeking to do is modify this existing special permit, not, not under two forty-three A. Uh, where you're establishing the existing, two existing dwellings prior to nineteen fifty-nine.
And again, on that part of the bylaw, could you just go over the situation where it has to do with, um, year-round use, or?
Sure, so this, this deals specifically with, uh, two dwellings that were, they had not both been used for year-round use prior to that date. But it established that, uh, specifically, it says year-round habitation is deemed to be an extension of use. Uh, so following the special permit, that, that is a permitted use.
So since that, since that date, has there been multiple owners of the site, or?
Yes.
So have any of those people used it in a manner that that wouldn't apply?
I don't know that using it, uh, seasonally would, would mean that it couldn't be used for year-round use, even if someone only came down in the summertime.
Is there, um, what's, what's the, um, this, this storage, is, is there a full basement in the cottage?
No. No, it's a, it's a very small crawl space, it's only, uh, two feet high or so.
Is there one in the main?
Yes, there's a basement in the main house.
So if we, um, if this was to go forward and we eliminated the shed, if they have storage in basement areas it is. That would cut down on some of the lot coverage, I, I had the same comment that Scott did, the, the difference in lot coverage is so minimal, it's, it's not even almost worth mentioning as, as a positive effect to the, to the project. As far as, I know you just found her today, but as far as the, that cobblestone apron and the, in the fence, um, that's something you would need to remove out of the road layout. And I know that we've had issues in the past with engineering and D P W that, uh, with cobblestone apron specifically because of the snow plowing. And in most cases, they keep the cobblestone apron part off of the layout, and they have them do asphalt, but I think in those cases, you'd probably have to actually apply for a permit.
We spoke with our, we spoke with our client about that, and, um, the cobblestone apron and the fence both predated their ownership, but they'd be willing to relocate them both onto their property. And to pull a permit with the engineering department, uh, for that relocation. Uh, as to the shed, I, I don't think we'd be inclined to remove the shed, it doesn't appear that there's a bulkhead to the existing basement. Um, the.
What's the, what's the, what's the access hatch on the plans?
That is just to get into the eighteen inches, so you lift that up and that's how you kind of belly crawl in to the dirt. Foundation underneath the existing cottage.
Okay, there seems to be also one on the main house?
There is access down to the lower level on the far side of the house, there's a stair that goes down, and there is access down there. The lower level is finished in that, so it's not for kayaks and other things, so the only storage on the entire site for trash, any thing is that little shed.
So just one more question, so what actually is finished in the basement of the main house?
As you go, there's a stair that when you go down, there's, um, a small space down there that is plastered and painted. And it's just a little space, I wouldn't even say it was furnished, and then the rest of it is utilitarian.
That's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Uh, any other follow-up questions from the board?
So I have one, I think, issue where I was looking at the site plan. And they're referencing that they're keeping the same setback from the street. However, there is a proposed granite step that is drawn on the plan, but does not have dimensions. And the building department as well as zoning will limit that granite step to a maximum four by four foot landing. Because you are required typically by code to allow a landing. Anything larger would be an additional encroachment into the, uh, street.
Thank you, Erin.
That's fine.
Any other follow-up questions from the board?
I actually have a question, but it's to the administrator. Could you address the situation where we usually have that nineteen fifty-nine criteria?
So I did mention that issue at the time of filing. That would be looking specifically for information that showed that there were two residential units on the lot. Uh, we typically ask for information from the assessor's office, there apparently wasn't an assessor record. Um, the only thing that was submitted to the file was an aerial, uh, from nineteen fifty, which is in the file. Uh, it merely shows. Some roof, uh, it, but there's no way to identify if that is the roof of a shed or the cottage. Uh, the decision from nineteen eighty-eight was regarding the existing main dwelling. That file just states that there is another building on the lot, but it does not date the other, uh, structure.
Um, if I may, I would just point out that, that it's two separate sections of the bylaw. Um, two forty-three A, um, allows for two dwellings on a lot prior to nineteen fifty-nine as a continued grandfathered use. Two forty sixty-six D, which is what, um, was, the special part was granted under in nineteen eighty-eight, uh, allows for, again, um. Nonconforming use of two or more structures on a single lot, not previously used for year-round habitation. And that special permit did state that, uh, the site is adequate in size and suitable for the proposal, in that the two dwellings have been in existence for many years. Uh, and again, this was nineteen eighty-eight, so that gets us beyond theoretically the nineteen eighty-one date. We can certainly provide more information relative to prior to nineteen eighty-one, we can probably provide information prior to nineteen fifty-nine. Uh, the issue becomes that, um, it, you know, it was a, uh, until the mid seventies, this was a, uh, until the early seventies, rather, this was a hotel use. So it's, it's really two separate sections of the bylaw, so we're not looking, we haven't sought to establish that it was prior to nineteen fifty-nine. Because this section of the bylaw only requires nineteen eighty-one, where in that case, the dwellings had not, um. Had not, uh, pardon me. Not previously used for year-round habitation. So prior to, you know, following that, there, they became allowed for year-round habitation, so again, I think.
Wait, wait, a question, that's a question, Kevin, regarding, so my reading of D is that. It can't be used for year-round habitation, it says year-round habitation is deemed an extension of the use.
Thereby requiring a special permit. So changing it from a non, changing it from partially u- u- use to year-round would, would require a special permit. So ju- even the change in the use as opposed, as opposed to just the change in the structure would require that special permit.
So this special permit that was granted, because I haven't. Uh, I haven't seen that. Uh. Unfortunately, uh, specifically said that this building could be used year-round, is the intention to use it year-round?
It's, it's currently a second home for the, for the applicants. Uh, but it, it's going to be finished in a way that it could be used year-round, it'll be heated, uh, Jill, correct me if I'm wrong in that.
That's fine.
So Ken, in response, in response from the file on the previous permit, the previous permit only related to the main house, it didn't relate to the cottage. So what they were doing is they were going for renovation of the main house, so that's what they used it for, so, so. It did not deal specifically with the cottage, and they only mentioned that the buildings were there. Um, for a previous amount of years, but it's very generic. And that's why I asked about the situation about not previously used for year-on habitation, because when they didn't deal with directly with the cottage, that's why I was wondering if somebody, has somebody used it? And now that wouldn't apply anymore.
So what is the, what is the intention? Will the cottage be occupied year-round?
It's certainly going to be possible to be used on a year-round basis. But I don't think we're imposing a requirement as we work with an accessory apartment for a certain percentage time of use.
When we started this project, the goal was to renovate the existing cottage to make it. A little more solid and a little nicer. And as we got into the structure and realized that we had no. And as we got into the structure and realized that we had no foundation to work with, we couldn't renovate that existing building. So in moving to. Build a new cottage and not make the condition worse, to keep it the same or slightly improve it. The real goal was to make this an attractive building that related to all the architecture of the Victorian community. And so we had hoped to do that on the existing foundation, but it wasn't possible. So in in theory, no use, no change is being suggested. Except that we didn't have a foundation to work with, which is how we've gotten down this path.
Kevin, may I ask a question?
Go ahead, Scott.
Uh what what made it on a what what made it um impossible to put a a block or a poured foundation under the existing structure? What what was what were the um what what pre- precluded you from doing that?
Well, I guess we could. It's just that the floor framing is in such poor condition that it's essentially. Rebuilding it piece by piece. So we would, you know, secure or lift in the air a a structure. And then put a new foundation underneath it and then redo the floor framing and. And then we'd still have an architecturally unfortunate structure for all of the community to look at. Instead of something that we think is a significant improvement for the community.
If I if I may, I'll just I I'll share a a a screen to show. Uh that's the the condition of the existing foundation. The. A- as you can see, it's 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 really kind of just ruined together uh pretty haphazardly. And is in pretty terrible condition.
So all you told me is the joists is Kevin.
I I understand, but that, you know.
That's what the the sills aren't rotted. So if if those if if those uh floor joists are jacked up right now and sitting on on blocks. Your your testimony is that 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 structure couldn't be jacked up and a foundation put under it. Absolutely not. That's what the testimony is, right?
Well, I think in fairness, we know that anything is possible to rebuild. You know, we can surgically, carefully take apart a cottage and hold the things that are in good shape. And you as you saw, the floorboards on top of those floor joists were in rough shape. It's quite punky when you walk across the floor. So could we do this? Absolutely. We could pick that cottage up and work with it and set it back down on that exact footprint. Um we're not sure that that is serving. The community, the intentions of the zoning, the goals of architecture, the goals of improvement. But absolutely, Scott, we could surgically do that.
So it's aesthetics that's more. You're more more in tune because of the aesthetics. My last question, I guess, for the for this is. What is the increase in mass, not footprint? What is the increase, the percentage of of mass increase on the height? And the overhang and the dormers from the existing structure? Do you have those calculations?
I do not.
Typically, when we look at massing, we use um gross floor area, uh gross building area. And. So we 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 just take the gross floor area, gross building area. We look at the the footprint, we look at the. Um we look at the overall lot coverage and we did submit that worksheet. And uh wait me for a moment as I as I pull it up here.
The reason I ask is because you do have two structures on a very, very small lot.
No, I I I understand.
The plans, you go from what's obviously a cottage into something that is quite larger. The very minimal uh reduction in the footprint.
So the. The gross floor area will increase by one hundred and twelve square feet. Which is essentially the area of the loft that's being added. However, when we look at that in comparison with the neighborhood, uh as I mentioned during the presentation. Of the forty five properties nearby, uh twenty one have larger gross building areas, uh twenty five have larger footprints. And twenty three percent have a higher lot coverage by structure.
With dual structures on with dual structures on a single lot.
We're we're looking at lot coverage by structure, whether it be a single structure, a structure with a detached garage or two dwellings.
Okay.
That's that's what what's considered there.
Alright, thank you. I'm good, thanks.
Thank you, Scott. Uh any other any other questions from the board at this time?
Yeah, Kevin, are you able to share the um? The plan of the existing conditions?
Yep, happy to. And that's the existing conditions plan right here.
Alright, so so this is just my question. I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. So that whole left side of the driveway, is that also in the road layout for Crown Ave? It appears that most of the parking actually isn't on the site.
So it it does appear as though some of the driveway does come into the road layout here. Uh it's a gravel drive.
And then also and then also across the front?
Yeah, but I think that's typical of most driveways. They have access across the road layout.
So where do you actually park?
Uh cars park in the gravel driveway area here.
So if where it says deck over porch, is there enough room for a car to park there without being in the layout?
They would pull, I'm sorry, I was. Jill, I'm sorry, Jill, were you answering that?
Oh, I was just saying that, yes, you can, they pull their car and tie it up to the building and that's where they park.
And and that won't go, so they won't be extending into the road layout?
No, there'll be no, there'll be absolutely no change on that for the existing house and the layout there. Except correcting the cobbles and the fence will be put onto the property line.
So so I guess my my question, Jill, is I I know that, but. So usually if you have a driveway and someone's parking, that is actually, you have to actually be on your own site. Can they fit a car in that smaller space and stay on their site? Are they still going to be in the layout?
So they, I think we can see uh that there's a dimension of eleven point seven feet. From the house to the edge of the property, which is where they park that car. So they pull in off of Forest Ave and pull, yes, right where the pointer is.
You you could you i- is there a way you can tell me what the dimension is from that deck over porch corner to the lot where it touches the street?
It's right, yeah, it's greater than eleven point seven, Tim. I don't know if you have that number.
Because you have a you have a width dimension in back that says eleven point seven?
Yes.
And it looks if you took that eleven point seven and moved it from the deck. That deck over porch corner going towards Forest Ave, that you would. Be a lot, be back into the street layout again.
I would say, well, this this distance from this corner here where it's labeled fif- uh forty five point two down to this corner, I would say.
No, 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 from 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 the forty five point two, go where you were, now go towards forest, like you go straight out. I assume they park the car in front of the.
Right here. Well, yes, I would agree with that, but I think what you were saying here is the cars would be parked in this area where the where the cursor is right now.
So they wouldn't use that other space then?
No, in my experience, they pull the car in front of the house. I have not seen a car in front of the deck area that you're speaking of. Between the deck and Forest Ave.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other follow up questions from the board?
So is there sufficient parking for an additional vehicle for the cottage?
Parking is remaining the same and the use of the cottage is remaining the same. Uh we're not adding a new use rec or reducing a bedroom. Um so I think the parking there is tight. I think there's no question of that, but we have an existing use. Uh that we're not, we're not changing the nature of the use. We're we're just changing the structure.
So you'd be limited to approximately two cars?
I'd say that's correct.
I believe at this time, there's a gate in that fence and that when they have a summer guest in. Or a guest in the cottage, they open up that gate and pull a car onto the lawn.
So the issue, the the issue there, what I brought up earlier and and that would have to be relocated, is that fence in that whole gate area is actually on the road layout.
Yeah.
So you'd have, you'd have to either remove the fence or reconfigure something back in on the lot. Once you do that. Um you might be able to work something, but maybe if you left it out, no fence, it might work better.
Yes.
Anything else?
Um I just wonder if if you couldn't reorient the cottage. In a way that would improve the setbacks and maybe even create an adequate area to park in front or next to it. You know, you you're basically putting it in the same. Footprint. Uh but if you turned it. Ninety degrees and pushed it back further on the lot. It would impinge on their yard, but uh it it would, you know, it would improve all the setbacks. It would also clo- it would make it closer to the septic, Ken. Ah, okay, I'm not looking. If they put that short corner back, it would increase the nonconformity because they'd have to get a variance on the septic. Okay, I didn't see the septic. On the uh leach pit, right, Tim? That could be the issue.
Yeah, yes, uh Scott, this is Tim from Homes in McGrath. The um. The leach, the leaching tank, the septic tank and leaching pit are in the the rear of the cottage and the rear of the dwelling underneath the stone patio up back. So you slid that in further, it would create a nonconformity and a border health barrier.
Thank you. That addresses that. It's fine.
Okay, and I'm not seeing any public comment in the webinar. Bob, you had something?
Yeah, what what is the size of the current septic?
The uh existing tank's a fifteen hundred gallon tank and then there's a uh assessable, excuse me, a leaching pit. Um in between the shed and the cottage, it's a six foot diameter uh leaching pit with three feet of stone around it.
And how many bedrooms does that carry?
Uh I believe it was originally designed for five bedrooms.
I think this would be a reduction down to four.
Tim, where's the, where would the overflow go in the event that that failed with with such little lot coverage? Would it go in the same spot?
Um it it would either have to be rebuilt and back and I did talk with Scott McGann about this at one point. Or we'd have to bring something along the front, along the front property line, like a long trench. And it would, either way, it's got, it would require a uh local upgrade approval or a variance if we had to replace it. But the system's in good condition right now.
So it's been inspected recently?
I have not inspected it. According to the homeowners, there's no backup issues and they did have an inspection when it was purchased.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. And I'm not seeing any, uh again, I'm not seeing any public comment in the webinar chat, uh just so everyone knows. And uh how would the board like to proceed?
Mr. Chair, if I if I may, um you know, there there's been a lot of questions and a lot of uh suggestions. And uh if if the board would be willing to have a a discussion prior to closing, we would appreciate it.
If anyone wants to weigh in, go go ahead.
So, you know, it's a very tiny lot, uh certainly. Currently overburdened with all this on it, but uh Kevin's really just asking to keep things the same. Except they're making the building taller and I think architecturally, Jill made a pretty good argument for why that. And actually, the drawings make it look pretty nice. So I don't think that's. Not ideal, but uh. I don't think there's much they can do beyond what they're doing and they've got a special permit currently that pretty much allows. So I guess I'm inclined to support it.
And I'm inclined to support it as well. I know there were a number of issues raised by the engineering department. But um the applicants represented that they're able to resolve those issues, so I'm on board with it.
They are reducing by one bedroom, so I guess that's a plus.
Bob, how do you feel?
Uh well, just just from reviewing the file. I I'd like to get some kind of evidence more about the cottages and and when they were there. I know that was brought up before. Um that preexisting permit dealt with the main house. It really didn't deal with the cottage. And um I think you could probably get the information and I know that the administrator had brought some ideas to suggest that. They submit something at one point. Um the lot coverage is is heavy. And the only way I can see to reduce it at all is the elimination of the shed. I know that they said there was a finished room or something downstairs in the main house. But you have two structures on this right now that are shown on the plan. And you basically have room, once you reconfigure the driveway, the fencing and all the encroachments. You're basically getting one car per structure. And there is no parking allowed on any of those streets. There's signs posted, so. I I'd like to see the shed eliminated. I'd like to see all the. The fencing, the driveway handled, um that is anything that's in the road layout. But I think it would be worth it to see if we can get some kind of documentation on the cottage. It may even help them in the future. There just is very little information in that last special permit. Um as far as they're reducing the bedrooms, you know, they are reducing it in all likelihood. They'll probably use it. The loft is a sleeping. I know it's an open area, but I think their septic will carry it anyways. Um if the septic does ever have to be replaced, they've always been very good forgiving variances on those small lots. And in all likelihood, they would request it be moved to the front yards. The other properties that I've dealt in there that had to get something changed, they all tried to put them at the front yard. It's just more of an easier access. Uh as far as the air conditioning on the side, if they can fit it in once they move the fence in, I don't have any kind of issues with that. But I was just, I was very surprised that so much of this was in the road layout. And none of that was ever in the, you know, presented anywhere in the file. So they're actually going to lose parking area. Once they bring that that into compliance. Um they may want to see if they can create parking area at lot seven, where it's labeled lot seven. In the square footage in front of the cottage space. That would at least give them an extra vehicle space. I think looking at two, two dwellings on this size lot with only availability for two parking spaces. Is extremely problematic. Um you have a very dense population up there in the summertime and you know they're going to park on the main road. So I like to see, I know the landscaping's nice, if they could do some kind of parking area in front of the cottage in front, at least that would give them an extra space. Um and if they were willing, I could do some of those changes, I'd I'd be more in favor to, you know, to vote in favor of it.
Scott, are you ready?
Yeah, well, I don't love the fact that there's not a lot of room. I'm not hung up on the shed. Um and and if I could get some assurances from Tim that in the event that the septic failed in the future. It wouldn't, you you know, the it's doable to fix, you know, bec- if if it was a brand new Title V in there, I I I'd be, I'd be all set. But if if I, if he can assure me that they can put a new one in, in event this fails without. An act of Congress, then I'd be all right with it, I think.
Uh I can provide the uh an exhibit to the board. Um I I've spoken with Scott about it already. And um I I can get it off to the board to show a a four bedroom system fitting in the front. Obviously, we talked about already, it does require variances. I've talked with Scott about it, is that, that was one of the things we talked about when we originally reviewed. I've talked with Scott about it because that, that was one of the things we talked about when we originally reviewed the project, but that's not an issue on my part.
I appreciate it. That's all I, yeah, that's all I have, um, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Ed, how do you feel? Ed, you're on mute if you're. Still on muted.
Hello?
We got you.
Okay, no, what, what, what was just discussed, it looks like, you know, they've covered everything and they say go for it.
All right, thank you, Ed. Noreen, did you have anything?
Well, I just had a note about the Homes of McGrath letter dated March seventeen, twenty twenty. And it says, and I quote, "The lot has been developed as a residential, single-family house since the early nineteen hundreds."
I would just add, I mean, I think it's unfortunately just a misstatement because as we mentioned, it was part of the Forest Grove Hotel, prior to the early nineteen seventies. It was, it was a separate, essentially a separate room unit on this lot with a cottage behind it. And that was the case for a number of years. Just with regards to the shed, the only thing I'd want to point out is that the shed, even if removed, would only be a 1.5% reduction. Um, and, and this is not, uh, by this, this lot, though, though it is a dense lot and have high is by no means, um, the, the densest, uh, in this area. Uh, in my coverage calculations, as I said, there were twenty-three lots in the forty-five properties that had higher lot coverages. Uh, some, some, one came back on the GIS is a hundred and three percent, which didn't seem right. But you've got some pretty dense lots in the area.
Thank you for that.
Kevin, would you be able to, um, just supply some kind of documentation regarding age of the structure now that Homes of McGrath's letter is, even though it was an error, or maybe you can correct that? Because now you've got a letter from an engineer saying it was a single-family home, which is, I'm sure it's an error, but it's now been submitted.
Sure, I think we, we did submit an amended application and then we, a new cover letter explaining the history of the property. That was submitted in, in early April. But I'd be happy to submit something else. Uh, I just don't know what I'd submit beyond what, what I have.
So the, so the zoning administrator at one point had made suggests, suggestions, I guess, to the architectural firm regarding the research in the building. And they were suggesting doing research, including anything, water department, electric service, historical, neighbor affidavit, affidavit, et cetera, to attempt gain proof of the existing second dwelling.
Sure, and I think that the, that was, that was when the application was under Section two forty-three A, seeking to establish it prior to nineteen fifty-nine. However, the amended application, uh, did, introduced the existing special permit, which, uh, they had not been aware of. And, and was therefore, after that point, seeking a modification of that special permit. Uh, so they weren't seeking to apply under that, that Section three A, which requires that proof from prior to nineteen fifty-nine.
So what, what, what was submitted on that previous special permit application? Showing that there wasn't a previous year on habitation? Or was there anything submitted on the previous application, considering it was only dealing with the main house and not the cottage?
I don't think it's accurate to say it was only dealing with the main house. It, it allowed for the foundation work at the main house. But, uh, and again, just reading from, uh, the Board of Appeals, after carefully considering all the facts and evidence submitted at the hearing, makes the following findings. There are two dwellings on the site. Section thirty-four thirty of the zoning bylaw states that an existing non-conforming use of two or more structures in a single lot as of one January nineteen eighty-one, not previously used for year-round habitation, may not be altered, reconstructed, extended or changed structurally except by special permit from the zoning board of appeals. Um, and that was what the board issued the special permit under. And they went on to state that the site is adequate in size and suitable for the proposal and that the two dwellings have been in existence for many years. Uh, I, I don't know what evidence was submitted for the nineteen eighty-eight permit, but the findings, uh, as I, as I just read, indicate that, uh, this is what they permitted it as and that they relied on that evidence.
Robert, do you want more time to think about this? Because?
I, I would just like to see if you could get something.
We're, you know, we, there's other business, so if we're not going to come to a resolution, maybe we should just continue it.
I mean, if we could continue it and, and they could just see if they could submit anything regarding the history of the cottage and also at the same time, go over the issues with, uh, all the issues with the things that approach into the road layout.
I think that's fair.
We can certainly revise the plan to reflect that.
Yeah, because I mean, if you can do that, I'd be fine. I just would like to see something. Our next, um, Noreen, on the next, on the next possible date, I know that one of the dates was quick. Is, was it, is it June eleventh that's tight? Or could you think we could fit this into June eleventh because it's just basically a couple of issues?
Yeah, I think so.
So then I make a motion to continue to June eleventh? And then just provide the information discussed tonight?
Okay, so that's a motion to continue to June eleventh. Motion was made by Bob and second by Ed. Roll call, vote.
Can I just ask one other question before we vote? Uh, Robert, are, is, do we also want anything more on the septic?
Well, they did say that there was inspections, so maybe we could get a copy of their inspection.
Yeah, I think it would be good because, you know, Scott raised a good point, but if the septic is marginal, then maybe the way to do this whole project is simply move the cottage, reconstruct the septic and do it all.
Upgrade all at once. And Kevin, if they could also look in front of that cottage area, if they would be able to make some kind of parking space, even if it was gravel, if they need to use it for an extra parking space?
Sure, we can certainly take a look at that.
Okay, so motion to continue to June eleventh. That motion was made by Bob and second by Ed. Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
TJ, you're aye. Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Robert Dugan, aye.
And TJ, Harry, aye. So we'll see you back here on June eleventh. Thank you, Attorney Flower.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.
Okay, uh, up next we have application one dash twenty, Chevalier, four twenty-six Minot Road in East. And, uh, this is a continuation.
No, actually, uh, actually, we have another new hearing at Eight Elysian.
Oh, sorry, I missed that. Okay, so sorry about that. We have application twenty dash twenty, Bradshaw Trustees, Eight Elysian Ave in Falmouth, new hearing.
So application number twenty dash twenty, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section eleven of Chapter forty-eight of the Mass General Laws, we hereby notify that Richard K. and Mary Ann Bradshaw, trustees of Norfolk, Mass, apply to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections two forty-three C and two forty-sixty-nine E of the Code of Falmouth to construct a second floor addition to the pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on subject property known as Eight Elysian Avenue, Falmouth, Mass. So assessors, this includes lots eight and ten. Water department not applicable. Planning department, no comments. Fire department, no comments. There is a, uh, a memo here from Amy Lowell, uh, wastewater superintendent, because this property is on the Little Pond Sewer Service Area. Um, and she said, based on the information provided by Kevin, the second floor living room is not a bedroom and the proposed plan will not require a flow-neutral bylaw variance hearing. In the reasoning, um, behind that, uh, Kevin wrote that the room does not provide privacy for two reasons. First, there was no door to the room itself from the stairway, nor does the stairway have a door on the first floor. And as such, there is no privacy to the room. Second, the only means of entering the master bedroom is through the living room. There's always been my understanding, which was conveyed to me by Scott McGann, that you cannot have a bedroom off of a bedroom or put otherwise. The sole means of accessing a bedroom is through an adjoining room. Then the adjoining room cannot be considered a bedroom as there is no privacy to that room. I don't see. I don't seem to have an engineering referral. There is a, a letter from Edgar Gadbois. Please be advised, I live at Twelve Elysian Ave, next to Dick Bradshaw. I've been a resident at Twelve Elysian for over sixty years. I believe strongly that Dick Bradshaw's project would be a fine addition to the neighborhood. And, uh, just to the administrator, Noreen, was there a, was there a referral from engineering?
I don't have record of one.
Right, so we'll have to go on without it. This is the first file I've ever seen that actually doesn't have a referral from engineering. But, um, there also was a lot comparison worksheet for Eight Elysian Ave that was submitted with the file.
Thank you, Bob, and the voting numbers on this will be the regular voting numbers. Attorney Clower?
Good evening again, uh, I think for the last time tonight, but just good evening. For the record again, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney, I'm at Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth. And I represent Richard K. Bradshaw and Mary Ann Bradshaw, trustees of the Mary Ann Bradshaw Revocable Trust. They're the owners of Eight Elysian Avenue and the applicants in this matter tonight. Eight Elysian Avenue is located on the eastern portion of Falmouth Heights, near to Little Pond. As I mentioned before, it is a dense, largely seasonal residential community. This is on a lot of seven thousand five hundred and eighty-four square feet in the residential C zoning district. The existing dwelling is a three-bedroom home with a detached garage, footprint of, uh, eighteen hundred and thirty-six square feet. The existing ridge height is nineteen feet, nine inches. It's non-conforming, uh, it's non-conforming to front yard setback, being twenty-two feet, seven inches from Elysian Avenue and eleven feet, six inches from Nantucket Avenue, where twenty-five would be required in at least one of those conditions. The detached garage is non-conforming, uh, to the side yard setback being eight point two feet, where ten is required. And the rear, rear yard setback being five point six feet, where ten is also required. The lot coverage by structure is non-conforming at twenty-four point two percent, where twenty percent is allowed by right and up to twenty-five percent with a special permit. The applicants are seeking to modify the dwelling, uh, by, uh, essentially expanding the second floor. They're adding in one bedroom, uh, bringing the total from three bedrooms to four. Uh, but again, it is on the Little Pond Sewer District, which allows for up to four bedrooms in a dwelling. Uh, they're in the process of selling their longtime family home in Norfolk and transitioning full-time to this residence. The result of what they're proposing is no change at all to the non-conforming setbacks. They're not changing the footprint of the structure, uh, at all. Uh, however, with the issuance of a special permit, uh, the non-conforming lot coverage by structure would be eliminated and no new non-conformities created. The proposed ridge height would be twenty-nine feet, one inch. Due to the existing non-conformities and the lot coverage by structure remaining over twenty percent, it does require a special permit under Section two forty-three C and two forty-sixty-nine E. Two forty-three C does allow for pre-existing non-conforming structures to be changed by special permit, provided that what's proposed is not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board is asked to consider the standards of two forty dash two sixteen and whether or not that alteration creates a new dimension of non-conformity, impairs views and vistas and reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. Here, again, the existing setbacks are unchanged. There's no new non-conformity created. And with the issuance of that special permit, the non-conforming lot coverage by structure is eliminated. As that lot coverage by structure, though, will exceed twenty percent, that is a special permit under two forty-sixty-nine E. And in that case, the board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood, uh, the effect of shadow on adjacent properties, the impacts on views and justice from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. Uh, as was noted, we did prepare a lot comparison worksheet, looking at the locus and the forty-nine nearby properties within a three hundred foot radius. Of those forty-nine, twenty have larger gross building areas, sixteen have larger footprints, and thirty-four have a higher percentage of lot coverage by structure. With regards to the neighborhood, this is a relatively modest home and very in line with the area. There's no, uh, there should be no effective shadow on adjacent properties. To the west of this property lies Elysian Avenue. And the nearest home to the east is separated by the backyard of this property and that property's side yard, about sixty feet. There's no impact of views and vistas from public ways. And again, there's no effect of nitrogen on the coastal abeyments is on the sewer. There's no detriment to this project relative to the existing. There's no adverse effects. Uh, with the issuance of that special permit, it will eliminate an existing non-conformity. No new non-conformity will be created. There's no impairment of the views and vistas and it meets the standards of two forty dash two sixteen. Based on this information, I would ask that the board grant the special permit and I'd be happy to address any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. And once again, if anyone out there has any public questions or concerns, uh, type in your name and address in the Zoom webinar chat feature and we will address it when the time comes. Uh, we'll turn it to board questions at this time. James, do you have anything?
I'll defer to the voting members.
Scott?
No, none for me.
Mary?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mary. Ed?
I have one question. On the lot plan prepared by Tom Bunker and his people, it says on note number nine, it says that the, uh, proposed roof peak height is thirty point eight feet. And it refers you to a drawing prepared by Longfellow on sheet number eight, two dot one. And it, when you go to that sheet, it shows it at twenty-nine some odd feet. And I, I believe the, the Tom Bunker drawing lot plan is correct. The error, the error needs to be fixed on the architectural drawings prepared by Longfellow.
Sure, I see what, what they, what they're measuring from is the existing first floor and not from the existing grade, uh, on that A two point one. So from, uh, from the existing grade, it would be.
Yeah, but it's deceiving. It ought to be.
Sure.
Should be consistent.
That, that's, that's an easy fix, Mr. Van Gueren.
Yeah. Anything, anything else?
Other than that, nothing.
Thanks, Ed. Kevin, anything?
No, that's it.
Uh, you show an attic, um, just wondering what the, what the use of that is.
Storage.
And is it full height? What, what's the?
It, it, it appears that it's, uh, it's pretty small in size. I, I, I think that what you're seeing there would probably be, uh, full height. But it's, uh, it, it's not certainly the, uh, full, full run of the, of the house. It's, uh, it's, uh, smaller than the floor below, so it would be a half-story. It's smaller than the floor below, so it would be a half-story.
Anything else, Kevin?
That's it.
Bob?
Kevin, are there any dry wells? Proposed or how they're handling the runoff?
The plan doesn't reflect any dry wells, but I think it's certainly fair to. You know, condition is that if BSS design was in the opinion that we needed dry wells to accommodate any additional runoff. That it would be added, but I do think it's the same. Same exact footprint as exists, they're not changing that first floor. So it's essentially the same amount of roof area. But you know, I think if our engineer felt that it was necessary, they'd certainly be willing to add it.
Are there gutters proposed on this at all? I just couldn't tell from the plan.
It appears to me, looking at the plans, that there are, but I can't say that with a hundred percent certainty.
Okay, just for clarification, is there, just so I didn't check, is there a number that's clearly posted at the house?
If you wanted to condition that that one be added regardless if there is. That's.
I'm just double checking because I've never had a file that did not have an engineering referral.
We're flying blind.
Yeah, and there's no proposed work at all regarding the detached garage, is that correct?
Correct.
No questions.
Attorney Clower, regarding that issue with the. That living room that wastewater brought up in that email. Do you happen to have a floor plan by any chance?
I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to show that.
Thank you.
Let me just cue it up here. The question had come up as to what we're looking at here is the proposed second story. And. As you go up the stairs, there's a landing area and there's this living room or den realistically here in a master bedroom. And Ms. Lowell wasn't sure if that would meet the definition of a title five bedroom. My response to her was respectfully, I didn't think it was. As there's no door here and that is the only means of access to the master bedroom. And again, you essentially can't have a bedroom off bedroom because if you have a room that you have to walk through to get to a bedroom, that first room. Lacks the necessary privacy to be a bedroom. That's always been how, that's how it was explained to me on a walkthrough of a property many years ago with Scott McGann. And when I forwarded that information to Ms. Lowell, she said that based on what I had. Explained that she did not feel that it would be a bedroom.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. Is there any room for a case opening there or?
You know, I don't know because you'd be, I suppose there probably is. This is, I'm assuming three and a half feet, which is what most doors are. You'd have to move the wall down a little bit to do it. I don't think it's necessary again because it's not. Even if there was a door there, that is still the only means of access to the master bedroom.
Right. Okay, thank you for that.
Kevin, I did have one question for you on the lot coverage by structure. Same number for lot coverage by structure, parking and paving?
Yeah, I saw that myself and it appears that the. The driveway is gravelled. And there must be no other landscaping features essentially that.
Right, but wouldn't that be still part of where one might park? Man, it just seems pretty unusual that you wouldn't include whatever driveway area.
Well, I think because they have the garage, perhaps Tom hadn't counted it as structures paving and parking. But there's no proposed change to that. So I don't want to, I don't want to guess at Tom's methodology, but my suspicion is because of the garage is a garage there, it's not required parking area.
Any other follow-up questions from the board?
I guess just a follow-up to Kevin on that, since it does already exist, the parking area. But if this was proposed to be approved tonight, could they supply us at least with an updated. Structure parking paving percentage that can be put into the decision?
Sure, I'd be happy to ask Tom that and I just want to, as I'm saying that, we can just see, I want to see if he's perhaps here. Tom Bunker is here and he has his hand raised, so perhaps we can have him come in.
Sure, if Thomas or Adriana could do that for us.
Hi.
Mr. Bunker, hi.
Yes, hi, I am here. I can share my screen if that would help. Do you see that? I mean, that's, you know the plan anyway. But yes, I mean, in past practice. You know, there's a two-car garage, we've always only counted two cars per property. And there's a garage which may be undersized, but we consider that a two-car garage. Which takes up the two parking spaces, driveway is gravelled and it's not pavement, it's not required parking. So we didn't count it, as Kevin had suggested.
Thank you for that, Mr. Bunker. Any follow-up questions?
I have one, and I don't know if this is for Tom or Attorney Clower, but. After doing my site visit, that's pretty tight area over there with one-way streets and the set. Will that, will that, that site encompass all the construction vehicles? Will they be able to work on-site, do all their parking from the site and all the stock? Because I don't think that road would support any work vehicles.
I believe so, it's a fairly deep driveway, especially for that area.
Right.
Between the road and the garage area. It's much more substantial than most of the driveways, so I think that there wouldn't be any issue with doing that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Any other follow-up questions from the board? All right, seeing none. And there are no public comments at all in the Zoom webinar chat, just so everyone knows. How would the board like to proceed?
So motion to close.
Second. Motion to close was made by Bob and seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, Scott?
Scott, yes.
Ed?
Ed, Van Gueren, aye.
Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye. And how would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve. With condition.
Okay, is there a second? Scott, thank you.
Second.
All right, findings?
Two forty dash three C, two forty dash sixty-nine E, two forty dash two sixteen, not substantially more detrimental. There's no increase in non-conformities from the front yard setback, which is currently twenty-two point seven. With the side yard in Nantucket, which is eleven point six. Lock coverage by structures will be twenty-four point two percent. And structures parking paving will also be twenty-four point two percent. Property is located in the LPSSA sewer district and is connected to the sewer, which allows up to four bedrooms. There are no changes proposed for the detached garage. And the side yards setback on the garage structure is four, is five point eight where ten is required. There was a lot comparison worksheet submitted. It shows that this lot falls in the median. It's a second floor addition to the structure only, no increase in footprint. There is a second floor living room in the floor plan. But it is as proposed as not being a private space.
I might be the only one who might have a little concern about that, but are we satisfied with the applicant's representation and wastewater? Wastewater's email? They're not concerned about that becoming.
Yeah, I mean, they're not concerned because they're going with privacy. I was going to suggest we can condition that living room on the second floor. Shall not be modified to create privacy and that way would have to be open. You're allowed four bedrooms if they have to in the sewer district, but once they go in for more than that, then that's low neutral by law triggered.
Right. Okay, anything else, Bob?
Not for findings.
All right, conditions?
So I would condition gutters and dry wells. Make sure that the number is clearly posted on the property. No changes, allowed to propose garage. The second floor living room shown on the room layout plan shall not be modified to create any form of privacy. Property is only. Bedroom count will be four bedrooms. If anything modifies for an additional bedroom, they would have to apply to the town. For variance of the flow neutral by law, which is with the selectmen. No changes to the detached garage structure. Construction vehicles and all materials are to be kept on-site, no parking in the streets. During construction.
Clarification, Bob?
Yeah.
On ridge height?
Oh yeah, what's the? What was the ridge height? I don't have, is it nineteen? That's.
It should be thirty point eight feet. Thirty point eight feet is shown on the drawing prepared by Tom Bunker.
So let's put that in, so add that to the findings, the ridge height?
Yeah.
All right, anything else for either findings or conditions?
No, I think that's it. I guess the only other thing would be. I think we should probably go with the normal, what we usually put in for hours of construction, just because this is a summer area, you've got tight streets.
All right, if that does it for findings and conditions, I think it might.
Oh, and would you have to add the normal one from engineering too? You can't just, also a run-off must be encompassed on-site, is any grading changes?
Good catch.
And I know we didn't ask about lighting, but same thing with lighting, must be kept on-site.
Great, so the motion to approve with conditions was Bob and seconded by Scott. Roll call vote, Scott?
Scott, yes.
Ed?
Ed, Van Gueren, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. We really appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. I'll just throw it out there, how does everyone feel about a five-minute break?
I was just thinking, I'm bored.
All right, we're just about halfway there, so. Okay, we will take a quick minute break and we'll be back shortly to pick up the rest of the agenda. Um, getting back into the agenda with our continuations. We have application one dash twenty Chevalier, one, I'm sorry, four twenty six. Monarch Road in East Falmouth. And, uh, this application has not opened yet. Not Bob, you're on mute.
Sorry, is there anyone here for the applicant?
It's a good question. I'm looking in the attendees list, but I'm not sure who might be representing them. I think where we left it off last time, he needed, uh, was it an engineer?
His engineer didn't appear last time, but, um, I'm not sure if they are here.
I'm not seeing any names that cloud at me.
So Landers Colley was the engineer.
So we'd be looking for Chuck Chevalier or Ken, and I'm gonna mess up the last name for Bravogle.
Correct.
Thank you, Mary. All right, I am not seeing anyone in the attendees list.
So a question to the administrator, if the applicant is not here, um, how do we handle that, where this was the continuance date?
Uh, you can either continue the hearing or you can withdraw it.
So Mr. Chairman, I guess my only question would be, uh, this, if, if they are not appearing. Um, we were forced to continue this hearing the first time without opening because the engineer, um, just also did not attend. There were engineering questions, and if this is the second time and now the applicant or the engineer is not attending, then I would be more likely at this point with our schedule to withdraw.
I would support that.
All right, uh, if you want to make the motion, Bob, go ahead.
So then I will, uh, make a motion, um, to withdraw application one dash twenty Chevalier four twenty six Monarch Road, East Falmouth. Um, due to non-appearance of applicant or its representative.
And is that without prejudice? I mean, if they came back, they could refile.
Thank you, Ken. I was just about to bring that up, so.
Yep, with, with, without prejudice, so if, if they decide to, they could, you know, refile and start the process again.
Very good. So, uh, Bob was making that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
You, uh, give that to Ken. That was a close one. Roll call vote, Ken?
Uh, Ken Forman, I.
Scott?
Scott's going to go.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ed?
Ed, Ventura and I.
And TJ Hurry, I. Okay, so that is taken care of.
And then the administrator could just, um, contact them just to know that it was withdrawn and they'll have to refile.
I'll do.
Thank you, Nora. Okay, up next, we have application nine dash twenty Hibbit trustee. Eight Mass Road in Woods Hole, and, uh, this is another application that's been continued, but we have not opened yet.
Are the applicants or the representatives here?
So that would be, uh, Bob Ament is appearing on that.
So should I go ahead and open the application?
Go ahead, Bob.
Application number zero zero nine dash twenty, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty A of the Mass General laws. You hereby notify that Karen M. Hibbit, trustee of Arlington, Virginia, is applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit slash variance pursuant to sections two forty dash three, two forty dash two sixteen, two forty dash sixty eight A eight, and two forty dash two oh three of the Code of Falmouth to raise and reconstruct the existing dwelling and allow an accessory structure, a shed, within the front yard setback on subject property known as Eight Mass Road, Woods Hole, Mass. For referrals. Accessors, no comment. Fire department, no comment. Engineering. Um, item one, the application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Mass Road is a public right of way in this area. The alterations proposed to the right of way will require filing a permit with the engineering division. We requested the board either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit from the engineering division prior to closing the hearing for this permit, or that the board include the following condition in the special permit if approved. And the condition would read, the applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to the start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the driveway permit. Um, item A, note that we will be looking for the following information added to the plans for the driveway permit. Construction entrance, access to and from the site will be only allowed via a stabilized construction entrance for both the demolition and construction phases. And two, we will require a protection of the existing catch bases in Mass Road. Item two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public rights of ways. Four, a portion of the proposed patio north of the proposed driveway appears to be located within the public right of way. This would require a license from the selectmen. We recommend that the applicant obtain a license for this or revise the plan so that no portion of the patio is located within the public right of way. Five, the existing wall is partially in the public right of way. Was this licensed by the selectmen, question mark? We recommend that the applicant obtain a license or remove the wall from the right of way as part of this project. Six, drywells are proposed for the roof drains. We typically require drywells infiltration areas to be located a minimum of ten feet from property lines as recommended in the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. We defer to the board if this setback should be met. Seven, we recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for the residence per section ninety nine dash one. The fixing of legible numbers required in time for compliance. Health department. There is a four bedroom septic system that was installed in two thousand eighteen. I have no issues with the project as long as the total number of bedrooms or rooms that meet title five definition of a bedroom doesn't exceed four in the structure. The septic is properly located in relation to the proposed walkout basement. Walkouts are considered slab foundations on the side of the walkout. The setback for both the leaching and tank to slab is ten feet. The plan shows fifteen feet to the leaching and ten to the tank. Water department. Upgrade the service line and remove the meter pit. And the meter is to be moved inside the structure. Concom, out of jurisdiction. Planning, no comment. And that's it currently.
And for the applicant, attorney Ament. Nope, you're muted, attorney Ament.
Mr. Chairman, there, there was a couple of things in the file of some butters that had concerns, but those were withdrawn.
Thank you for that, Bob. Attorney Ament, we hear you.
Excellent. Thank you very much, and, um, thank you again for your service during this difficult time, um, members of the board and staff. I'm Bob Ament. I'm an attorney. At Ament Clower, you've heard a lot from Kevin Clower, uh, tonight. Tom Bunker is the surveyor. His firm, BSS Design, has prepared plans that will present plans that you have copies of. I was expecting the architect who's prepared plans that, uh, we've submitted and I can show you. Uh, that's, uh, James Estes of Rhode Island, but I don't see him on the attendees, um, list, uh, so maybe he wasn't able to join us. This case involves, uh, the, uh, request of the owner, Karen Hibbit, who's trustee of a family trust, to tear down a very small, outdated, seasonal, legally non-conforming dwelling that was built about nineteen forty in the Woods Hole neighborhood of, uh, Gansett Woods. And she intends to build a, a larger, but relatively modest new house that, uh, begins to be around. Uh, the property, um, has been, uh, owned by the Hibbits just for a few years, but, um, Karen's parents, um, have lived in the, uh, budding property at twelve Mass Road, uh, seasonally, an unheated, um, uh, property that has been in the family for more than one hundred years. Now, I have some photos to show you of the existing house. I guess I need to do split share screen and, um, select, uh, the photo having might need some technical help. Well, I don't see it, Kevin. Say again?
I'm looking at your screen.
Okay. Sorry, folks.
They're seeing. This one?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Kevin. So that is a picture of, uh, existing house. I believe it's, uh, about sixteen feet by twenty eight, uh, feet. And it is set, uh, below the street quite a, uh, a number of feet. And, um, it's a very, very steep, um, lot. Now I'm going to try to bring up the existing, uh, uh, conditions plan. Um, and you can see the location of the existing house. Um, it is set, um, nineteen point two feet back from, uh, Mass Road. And you can see from the topography how steep, um, the lot is. Let me show you now the, um. Proposed site plan. This is a lot of detail on this plan. Uh, some of that detail is there because of the efforts made to respond to all of those. Uh, comments by the engineering department. So that, uh, we think, um, this plan addresses them all. The original plan that was submitted, um, showed, um, a shed. Off of the southeast corner of the house and extending, uh, closer to the street. Now, the existing house, um, at nineteen point two feet is along this line. The proposed house shown here is entirely twenty-five feet back from the street. Except for this, uh, five and a half by eight foot entry foyer. The only other element of the project within twenty-five feet of the street. Now is the shed, which instead of, um, being about sixty-four square feet and extending. Uh, closer to the street. Has in response to concerns raised by neighbors been shifted. From this side, the southeast side to the northeast side of the house. It's been reduced in size so that it's only four and a half. Feet by about six, um, point three feet. So it's a very small shed and. The portion of the shed that is within twenty-five feet of the street. And the entry foyer here that's within twenty-five of feet of the street. Uh, totals only about seventy-two square feet. Presently, the house, the existing, uh, house that we've shown you, which is nineteen point two feet from the street. About two hundred and ten feet of that house is within twenty-five feet of the street. So there's only a small portion of it, uh, within the setback area. And no closer to the street than the existing, uh, house. Now, I'm also going to try to show you a. A rendering of the proposed house from the front. That's it. You can see that looking from the street. It's a one-story house. As defined in the zoning bylaw, it's a one-story house. It has a lower level underneath what you're looking at, which has three bedrooms in it. And the fourth bedroom is on this first floor level. It has an open kitchen and dining and living area and the one bedroom and a three-quarter bath. That is, there's, uh, just a shower in a small bath. And the same bathroom below that serves those three bedrooms. There isn't a full bath in this structure. Now, the proposed structure measures twenty feet, uh, in depth. In forty-five feet wide, except for the entry foyer. And in the rear, there's a fourteen and a half foot by three and a half foot extension, um, in the rear of the house. So this is a, a pretty, uh, modest, um, house that's proposed. You can see not only that foyer extension, which would be nineteen and a half feet, I believe it is, from the street. But this is the small shed. Now, because of the topography, um, there isn't any place for storage. Um, that doesn't involve bringing, um, items up from the, uh. The lowest level, um, to the street. And the shed is now so small that it's basically for a couple of garbage cans and maybe a few, uh, hand tools. Um, we had previously hoped there'd be room in a larger shed for, uh, bicycles, but, uh. That's not the way it's, uh, worked out. Uh, because the, the Hibbits have responded to concerns raised by some of their neighbors. Who didn't want to see the shed so close to the street. And thought that the shed would appropriately be on the northeast side of the house closest to, uh, the. The second Hibbit house at, at twelve, uh, Mast. Now, I think I should go back to the site plan because that's what most of your questions would be about. As I said, uh, this house, except for that foyer and the shed, it is entirely twenty-five feet. Back from the street. The lot coverage is only sixteen, um, percent. All of the dimensions on the sides are satisfied. The lot is small, um, but it's actually larger than the minimum lot size in the residential C district. In which a structure would be allowed by right if it was vacant under our zoning bylaw for an old lot. And it's adequate in size because we're able to, um, have a septic system, a brand-new septic system for four bedrooms. Was installed last year. It's in this area as shown. Here's the, uh, the tank and the leaching, uh, area. Um, and we, as I said, we only have sixteen percent lot coverage. In front of the house, and note that the street is at about elevation, uh, forty-five. This is, uh, the forty-five foot contour running through here. Um, the proposed first floor elevation of the house is only at forty-six. But the existing elevation, um, is, uh. Quite a bit lower. And so this area will be filled, retained by retaining walls. Here and there. The existing wall along the street that retains the side of the road will be rebuilt. Um, and rebuilt on, uh, uh, Hibbit property. We actually think that, uh, that old wall is maybe the town's responsibility that it was there when the town took. The road, but. That's irrelevant. It should be rebuilt and the Hibbits will rebuild it as part of this project on, on their property. Um, whatever, um, review of plans for that as part of a driveway, uh, permit. Um, or for any work that's needed in the road, we'll deal with the Department of Public Works. I don't think we're ending up with any, um, thing that will require. A license from the town. We do show a walkway that just leads to the, the street in this area. Um, but, um, that's pretty typical that people's walkways would extend to the street. Um, but again, if any licenses are required, we would obtain it. So the only non-conformance we have besides it being a small lot and, um. Uh, the distance setback from the street, that is the only other non-conformance. And we're significantly reducing the portion of the, um, structures that will be in the front yard setback. And the, uh, reason that the house is pushed towards the, uh, street. Is because of this severe, uh, topography. When we were proposing to have the shed extend closer to the street. Uh, although I think that could have been allowed by special permit as an extension of an existing, uh, non-conformance. We filed a variance in case the board thought that's the way it should go. The whole purpose of that shed, even the small shed, is to have some storage available at the street level. Not have to bring, uh, full garbage cans up, up from below. So we don't need a variance and the house is going to be, uh, um, an improvement. It's attractive. Much more useful to the Hibbit family. And it is not in any way, uh, more detrimental to the neighborhood. Let alone substantially detrimental to anybody. Now there, I mentioned that the plans were changed in response to, uh, concerns some neighbors had. Um, and there was opposition, um, particularly to the shed. From, uh, the Grosch family, which is, uh, next door, um, on what's shown as lot fifty-three. And from Bonnie Simon, who owns the property to the, uh, west. And from, um, the Rias who live across Mast Road. And all of, of them have submitted, um, letters recently withdrawing their opposition, uh, because of the change in. Uh, plans. I believe there are about sixteen letters now from, um, close neighbors. Uh, in Gansett Woods who support, uh, this redevelopment of this lot. There are one or two letters from, um, others who were opposed and did not respond to the change in the. And the plans, but we think we addressed whatever concerns, uh, they might have had. So with that, I'd be happy to, uh, try to answer your questions.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. I'm sorry, Attorney Ament. Uh, and once again, if anyone has any public comment out there, you can use the webinar chat, uh, please.
Okay, man, how do I see myself?
Use your full name, address, uh, your question, comment, concern. Whatever it might be, and, uh, we will address it shortly if you have questions. Uh, but on to board questions at this time, and the voting members are the full voting members if I haven't already mentioned that. Uh, Scott, we'll start with you. Do you have anything?
Good evening, Attorney Ament. Um, you said you don't need any variances, but it looks like you're going to need one for your septic tank, which is eight feet from the corner of the, uh, proposed foundation.
Well, actually, uh, although Tom Bunker can speak to that, uh, we're not exactly sure of that location. Um, and we will rotate the existing septic system, uh, to conform to the ten-foot, uh, setback if that's what required. Uh, we'll do that rather than seek a variance. I don't think there'd be a reason how we could get a variance for the new construction. So in the field, um, we'll find out exactly where that septic system is and, um, it will conform.
Okay, good. On, on the, on the, the write-up, it says from the ASBIL. So it should have been, if there's a certified ASBIL for a new system that was installed a year ago.
Uh, Tom, uh, Bunker perhaps can speak to that. I think there was a plan, but it isn't, um, we're not sure it's precise. Tom, do you have?
Yes, yeah, we have an ASBIL from, from when, when it was installed. And there, you know, plus or minus a foot or so, and this shows it now is eight feet from the corner. So probably is less than ten. We will verify its location and talk to Scott about it.
All right. Tom, with, with pushing the house back that far and with the grade change, you don't anticipate any problems. Uh, servicing that system pump truck-wise or any of that, right? In the future?
Tom, do you, are you able to respond?
I think so. The, uh, pump trucks are equipped with, uh. Yes, I think the pump trucks are equipped with usually adequate, uh, hoes to, to pump it out. Uh, they can bring more if they have to, but it, it, it's not. It's, it's not too far.
It's a new septic system, as I mentioned, brand-new in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, serves the existing house in approximately the location of the new house. It will be possible to get around the house or, um.
They only, they have, Bob, is because of, um, without soil profile, but knowing the area. Um, all your, um, downspout drainage, um. Identifies the fact that that, they have to be, all of them had to be stripped down to, um. To good material, to leachable material. Um, and I, I always become concerned when we're in that area with that glacial, glacial hill area. And without a soil profile, it was hard to identify. I just did. Septics don't tend to last as long as they used to in those kind of areas, you know what I mean? Um, so I was just concerned, you know, uh, uh, questioning whether you're going to have trouble servicing it at all. That's all right. Um, that's all I have for now, but I like to reserve for, uh, later.
Scott, thank you. James, anything?
Questions? Thank you.
Bob?
No, just is, has there been any issues with, with drainage because it is such as, uh, you know, strong angle drop-off in the back, especially with the hoses at the bottom?
Um, we're not aware of any drainage problems that have occurred and none of the correspondence from neighbors has mentioned that as a concern. Um, both the butter, uh, immediately to, um. The west, Bonnie Simon, and the Ulrichs who own the property next to hers. That just touches, uh, the corner, um, are among those who, uh, uh, sent in letters of support. Um, my understanding is that, um, there won't be any increase in runoff. Uh, from what might exist now, um, in part because, um. There are three, um. Basins, uh, print drains and, um, leaching structures that are proposed around the house.
And the, um, that little, uh, that little bin structure, is that the neighbors that's on the other corner? Just had trashcans in it? It shows on the plan. It just seems like.
Yes, it's a, it's, it's quite a small, uh, little structure that's open on the north side with two trashcans in it. That's all it is. Um, of course, that a budding property is, uh, Karen Hibbit's mother. Um, there's, uh, no problem with that. We are dealing with registered land. So even if there was some kind of a adverse relationship or they weren't family. Uh, it wouldn't create any permanent, um, um, rights, so we would consider that they're, uh, by a license. And again, you can see that it's, that that trash, um, container. That bin is, um, at the street level and there's a set of steep steps that goes right down from it. And you can see the obvious reason why, why it's there. It's the same reason that, um, at the new house, they want to have a little bit of storage. At approximately the street level.
And there, there were notes in the plan about the, um, trimming of the beech trees. Are there any of the large trees going to be removed or are you just doing trimming?
Well, the plan, uh, on the existing conditions plan, it does show, uh. Uh, four large trees that would be removed. As you could tell from your, I'm sure you've visited the site and from the photo. This house is, is really sort of, uh, darkened down on the existing house. It's, uh. Almost hard to see from the street at some angles. And, um. You know, to build a, the new house and to have adequate parking off the street as is, uh, proposed. Some of those trees have to be removed.
Will there be any kind of erosion control needed once they're removed? Again, because of the topography of the lot?
Uh, well, with regard to the, uh. Trees in the front of the yard, that's actually where we'll be, uh, building a level area for the parking, walkways and gardens. And then there will be retaining, uh, walls to the side of that. There will be, uh, some construction fencing, um, next to the Grosch property to the, uh, south. Uh, to protect their property. And, uh, limit of work is identified on the, um. Both the existing conditions plan and the proposed plan. So that can be. Not sure what's, what's intended. Maybe Tom can give an idea of whether it's silk fencing or, or hay bales or what.
All right, along, along the bottom, along the sides, it could just be the, uh, construction fence. Where any water, where might, if any water flow would be running parallel to the fence at the bottom. Let's say from the beech trees down around the bottom and over the existing septic system would have to be silk fence. And it would have to be kept, uh, there'll be, there'll be some risk of erosion during some of the excavation until it's stabilized with, you know, the convection. It'll, it'll have to be, uh, watched carefully.
And then, and then the construction access that is shown on the plan, is, is that area next to the road where you'd be clearing out?
Well, one of the requirements of, uh, uh, Board of Health is that, um, I'm sorry, uh, of the engineering department. is that the plans submitted for a driveway permit show the construction area, and we'll have to detail how we're gonna protect the town property and avoid any problems.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Bob. Ed, anything?
No, Ed doesn't have any more.
Mary?
No questions.
Ken?
Hi, Bob. Just so I understand, so you, originally, non-conformity was front yard setback? And is that the primary issue? And you're, except for the small areas that, by the, where the entrances and the shed, you're really improving that?
That's correct. The entire existing house, all across the length of the house is just over nineteen feet from the street. And now the only portion of the house that would be closer than twenty-five feet will be the eight-foot wide one-story foyer entrance and even smaller shed.
So in all other ways, this conforms?
Correct.
Mentions. And then with the possible issue that Scott brought up of the septic tank setback from the foundation, which you are willing to modify if you need.
Yeah, well, we're, we're aware of that problem. Tom Bunker identified it. And says that we can, in the construction process, simply rotate the tank a little bit if needed. It may also be that it's just a corner a few inches, and it may be that the health agent or the board of health finds that that's de minimis. But we'll do whatever is required in that regard.
Right. Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. And the concerns that I had were already addressed from other board members. Does anyone have any follow-up questions at this time? All right, and I'm looking at the webinar chat, and there is no public comment. So just again, any other follow-up questions at all? All right, how would the board like to proceed?
I guess motion to close.
Seconded.
All right, motion to close made by Bob and seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, Scott?
Bob's on the sky.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Bank, sure, and I.
Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
And TJ, hurry. All right. What would be the board's pleasure?
Happy to make a motion in favor.
Ed?
Seconded.
All right, motion in favor made by Ken and seconded by Ed. Findings?
Primary finding would be that they are substantially reducing the amount of the structure that encroaches on the front yard setback. And therefore improving conformity with the bylaw.
All right, any other findings?
Do two forty-three, two forty-two, sixteen, two forty-sixty-eight, eight-eight, two forty-two oh three. And then you should note it is a raise and reconstruct.
But, you know, for example, lot coverage, they're not exceeding the twenty percent.
There'll be no increase in runoff, and they've added-
New septic tank last year.
Go ahead, what's that?
New septic tank last year.
New septic tank, right, right.
Right.
Installation of a new septic.
They're no longer going for a variance?
And then people happy with that for conditions? I mean, findings, sorry. So then for conditions, I guess we would just ask that it be as per plan?
Yeah, so as, as per the advice.
That they ensure that the septic tank either is, you know, position is modified if Board of Health requires it, or that they get some determination that's de minimis encroachment on the required distance from foundation.
Yes, I think you just put, if needed, the septic would be relocated to maintain a ten-foot setback.
Very good.
Also, you'd want to put the subject to the revised plan February seventh, twenty twenty. You'd want to add in all of the comments from engineering? Including the dry wells and lead structures that are shown? Any information regarding a driveway permit and construction area?
There's discussion about straw wadding or silk fence too, wasn't there?
Yeah, so if there's any-
Well, that's shown on the plan, so if we just say as per plan.
And then I think I'd put if, if any additional erosion occurs, they will control as needed.
Okay, anything else for either findings or conditions? All right, seeing none. The motion to approve the project with conditions was made by Ken, seconded by Ed. Do a roll call vote. Scott?
Scott's on the sky.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Bank, sure, and I.
Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
And TJ, hurry.
Thank you very much, everyone.
You?
Have a good night.
All right, up next, we have the two continuations. It's application sixty-three dash nineteen, Caccadorian Ballas eighteen, Tajmoo Drive in East Falmouth, and application eighty-seven dash nineteen, Caccadorian Ballas. Oh, I'm sorry, that is, right, eighteen Tajmoo Drive. And see if the applicant.
We have Brian Wall.
We do have Brian Wall. Okay. Attorney Wall, we can see you, but we can't hear you right now.
How about now?
We got you.
Great, thank you. Shall I begin?
All right, Ed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Brian Wall. I'm an attorney. And I represent the petitioners in this matter, Stephen Bayless and Mr. Caccadorian. They both own properties on Muskegat Drive in Falmouth. I want to say that on this call, I think waiting in the audience section is also Attorney Drew Hoyt, who is counsel for Mr. and Mrs. Dundulus, who are the parties that are the subject of this request. And as some of the members of the board might remember, and I do see a couple of new faces, I think, this time. This request for enforcement involves my client's contentions that the floats that Mr. and Mrs. Dundulus have in the waters in a canal adjacent to their property are not lawful because they lack a special permit. And again, for those members that have been through prior hearings, you know that Mr. and Mrs. Dundulus strenuously disagree with this argument. As the board members probably can imagine, this disagreement that's before you is part of a much larger dispute over how my clients and Mr. and Mrs. Dundulus are going to use their waterfront on the canal and how they're going to berth their boats. And I want to report to the board that since the last time that we were before you, the parties have engaged in extensive and complex settlement negotiations. And very recently, we have reached a full agreement on resolving the dispute. And this agreement not only resolves both of the requests for enforcement that are before you, but also the other pending litigation that I refer to in my presentations in the past. And that includes a case pending in the appeals court involving the order of conditions that the Conservation Commission issued, and also an appeal pending in the Superior Court of the permit that my clients obtained from the Board of Selectmen under the zoning bylaw for the floats. And furthermore, and most importantly, the agreement addresses the future. It addresses how the parties are going to seek to configure their floats and how they're going to use them and use the waterfront in a harmonious manner. The agreement involves Mr. and Mrs. Dundulus moving their floats further away from Mr. Bayless's bulkhead to provide him room so that he can seek permits for a float parallel to his bulkhead. And the agreement calls for Mr. and Mrs. Dundulus to file an application for such relief, which they did so today. Both parties are jointly requesting the board tonight for a further continuance because part of the agreement calls for this enforcement matter to remain open while Mr. and Mrs. Dundulus seek the relief. And that is kind of for a few different reasons, but primarily because both parties feel that if the board moves forward tonight and makes a decision, one or the other party will be aggrieved. And in which case, it will make the settlement much more difficult to be implemented. So we, I don't know the date because the zoning relief was just filed for today. But the board should be setting a date for the Dundulus's hearing. And we're asking you to grant a further continuance of this matter to the very same evening. And provided the relief is granted, this case will be dropped. But actually, I strike that, under the settlement agreement, this, this request will ultimately be dropped, no matter what. The final thing I want to say is, I do realize that there have been several continuances of this matter already, and that the board does dislike multiple continuances that go on for a long time. But I would ask the board's indulgence in this matter, given the complexity of this, given the amount of litigation that's gone on between these parties and the level of effort that's gone into the settlement negotiations and agreement. I would ask that the board continue this matter to let these parties implement their resolution and, and, and live harmoniously in the neighborhood.
Okay, so for lack of a better term, I'll just refer to all the, I'll refer to it as a universal agreement. How's that?
That's very apt.
All right, and has, has that been executed yet?
It has. It was signed yesterday and today. And as I said, it's a very complex agreement that involves resolving all of the disputes, dismissing all the litigation, how to permit the process forward, including getting new permits for new float configurations, new chapter ninety-one licenses, and how to manage the waters of the canal between Mr. Bayless and Caccadorian and Mr. and Mrs. Dundulus.
Okay, and did you reference another filing that was gonna be made? What was that, would that be before this board or another town board in Falmouth?
I'm happy to address that. Also, Mr. Hoyt is on the line. I see him on the screen. He can speak better to that. But basically, there, there was a filing made today with your board seeking relief in the form of a special permit and a section six finding. The theory being that, or I should say, Mr. Hoyt's taking the position that his client's floats are grandfathered. They've become non-conforming because they've been in place longer than ten years. And he's seeking relief from this board to allow them to be adjusted so that they're moved further away from the Bayless bulkhead.
Okay, and I just want to be careful, Attorney Hoyt, if you did indeed submit that application to the board, that we're not addressing that tonight, but maybe you can just speak to the universal agreement at this point?
Sure.
I just don't want to have testimony on something that's been filed but hasn't been, hasn't been noticed and opened before the board yet.
Right, I understand. I would just concur with everything Attorney Wall just said. We have an agreement by which, you know, essentially, in simplest terms, Dundulus's have agreed to move their floats further up the bulkhead. And Bayless has agreed to put his float parallel to his bulkhead, which is, which is what, you know, which will eliminate some concerns that Dundulus's, well, will eliminate the concerns that the Dundulus's had with a, with a different proposal that, that Bayless had advanced at the Board of Selectmen. So you know, it's a resolution that allows both parties to access the water. You know, I think it's a, a resolution that's gonna, you know, satisfy all the parties and their successors at the property and, and will, you know, make for everyone to have good access to the canal without interfering with each other. And to do that, given all of the litigation that's been wound up, we just now have to sort of unwind all of these, all of these things, and also make sure that when we're done, everything is permitted locally and with, you know, has chapter ninety-one license. So given the, you know, given that the location of the floats on the Dundulus property are going to be, you know, it's a slightly different location than what current, what's currently the configuration is, and also different from the configuration shown, for instance, on the chapter ninety-one license. You know, they're, they're moving them, basically, they're moving them, I don't know, ten, fifteen feet or something like that, in, just away from, you know, the Bayless bulkhead. So we do need to, you know, get that, you know, documented locally through the procedure that we think is the right procedure is to, you know, to bring it forward as a special permit to the zoning board for, you know, modification of a pre-existing non-conforming use. And again, I understand that's not what you want to hear testimony on, so I'll, I'll just leave it in saying that that's the procedure that we're you know, gonna, gonna try to advance. Obviously, we're not presuming anything. You're, you're gonna have a hearing on it and make your decision. But just wanted to try to preclude a situation where a ruling on this enforcement request would end up basically derailing the procedure that we are hoping to use to get, to get the local permitting, you know, brought current with what we're proposing.
Thank you, Attorney Hoyt. And is the board in receipt of this universal agreement?
We have not, we did not file the agreement. The, the agreement as to, the, the content of the agreement as to what the Dundulus's will do with their float is, is reflected in the application for special permit that was filed today. The the other substantive part of it as to what will be happening on the Bayless property is gonna be brought forward to the selectmen because there isn't currently a permitted float there or a float that would have been in place long enough to have a grandfathered status. And I, the settlement agreement, I don't think was written with the intention of being sort of publicized in its entirety, but happy to answer any questions about it or, you know, talk with Attorney Wall about whether he would be comfortable or our clients would be comfortable filing it.
Maybe that, that would be best addressed to Attorney Wall then. So if, if we couldn't receive the actual agreement itself, could we receive something in writing stating that you two, that the parties have come to an agreement and are looking for a continuation? Because it's highly unusual that this board, in my five years, we've never had a application open. And I think this is since August, May, and by the time this new application will finally be heard before the board, I'm not sure. It might be June or July, so now- So now we're looking at potentially, you know, a full year that these applications have been floating out there. Attorney Wall?
Yes, if I may, Chairman Hari, I'll address the last part first. I do fully appreciate what we're asking here for the length of time. And it's not even presumed that we're going to get it. I assure you that. But I would also suggest, without boring the board members, that the amount of permitting and appealing that has gone on in this is a lot. And it also involves the town because the town is a party, the Board of Selectmen's a party, the Conservation Commission's a party. So we would, again, respectfully submit that it's in the best interest of all parties that even though it's a little unusual to continue this because we think it's going to resolve everything. Insofar as the writing, I would concur with Attorney Hoyt. There's nothing that I can think of that's private or special in the agreement, but we just didn't contemplate filing it with the board. But I do want to say that, and it sounds like maybe because of COVID and this fact that we're on this meeting, I did submit a letter today, approximately around 1:00 or 1:30. And it's a written letter that says in writing and confirms that the parties have reached a settlement agreement that resolves all of their disputes and lists a litigation specifically in the letter, the appeals court case, the superior court case, and these two enforcement matters. So there is written representations before you of this settlement agreement.
So similarly, the application itself for the for the special permit sort of has similar recitations about the fact that it is in settlement of those disputes. So if something from me and something from Attorney Wall saying, both saying the same thing.
Thank you, Attorney Hoyt. And Attorney Wall, as you did point out, there are, there's a new makeup of the board, but the voting members on this application, myself, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren, Mary Berry, and James Morse, just so you know. Does the board have any questions, Bob?
Actually, I was wondering if we could have some discussion just to the board regarding the continuance. So on the meeting, on the meeting minutes from April 2nd, was our last meeting on this, a letter was submitted to us from Mr. Wall requesting a continuation just to allow more time for an agreement to be drafted by all parties. I made a motion that night to grant the continuance, which was seconded and unanimously voted with the caveat that we would not allow any further continuances. My quandary with this in general, what's being discussed tonight, is, in my opinion, Mr. Wall has made a case that these other floats were not lawfully permitted. We also have testimony in the file that the Dundulus floats were changed at one point for size and changed back. We have testimony in the file that the floats were used by other parties, which wouldn't have been allowed as part of the permit. And even though I understand now there's another filing that Mr. Hoyt will be doing, I don't think that filing should have anything to do no further with what we do tonight. I would not be in favor of a continuance. I would be in favor of a vote. We've been hearing this since last August. We've been inundated with material from both sides. We've reviewed it. And I don't see why we can't make a decision tonight on what's been presented to date. I don't know what the next filing will be, but in most cases, we don't deal with floats, but that would be whatever that other issue is. We haven't seen it yet. But again, I am adamantly opposed to allowing a continuation tonight. This isn't something that's new information to both councils. It was at our last meeting. If they had come to an agreement and had previously submitted it to us, but at this point, we still don't even have anything submitted. We have a strong docket and again, I don't know how the other voting members feel, but I will not be voting for a continuance this evening.
All right, the other voting members on this, Ed, Mary, and James, anyone want to chime in?
I was all for letting it go one more time because it appears to me that we're close to getting to the end of this. And we don't want to be a part of throwing a monkey wrench into it. So I'd be for the extension.
All right, Mary?
I could basically go either way on it. I could vote now without an extension. Doesn't matter to me.
Thank you, Mary. James?
As an attorney, I don't want to derail a well-negotiated settlement between the parties, but I certainly do share Mr. Dugan's concerns about our docket and that this has been very, it's been languishing. But I'm going to agree with Ed at this point to give one more date, at which point I would be very firmly in Mr. Dugan's quarter if it's not resolved or was dealt with at that point.
Well said, James, and I'll echo your sentiment. And Noreen, if we were to continue this, these two hearings, I suppose. And I know you just received the application from Attorney Hoyt. Do we have any sort of, any sort of estimated date?
Yeah, we'd be looking at June 25th.
Thank you, Noreen. So with that information, does anyone want to make a motion? I suppose maybe I should check in with Mary before we make that. Are you swayed either way, Mary?
I didn't know what the question was.
If we were to vote to continue this to June 25th, would you be in favor or would you be in opposition of it?
I wouldn't be in opposition of either, either one.
Okay, just checking in on everyone before we vote, simple majority rules on a motion to continue. So I will make the motion to continue both application 63-19
The second.
and 87-19 to June 25th to be heard on the same night as the new application that's been submitted by Attorney Hoyt. And that was seconded by Ed, so we'll do a roll call vote. James?
James Morse, aye.
Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Bob? Bob, we got you muted.
Robert Dugan, opposed.
Thank you, Bob. And TJ Hari, aye. So those continuations will be heard on June 25th with the new application. Attorney Hoyt and Attorney Wall, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I make one comment before we get closed out of the Zoom? I want to thank the board for all the time, especially, I appreciate Mr. Dugan's comments. I want to say something that judges often come into jury pools and jury rooms and say that the fact that you were there and put the effort into the matter and were about ready to make a decision sometimes gets parties to bridge the gap and make a settlement. And as I said, this is involving a much larger picture than the enforcement, so I appreciate your time and your service.
Thank you, and thank you for giving me the chance to say universal agreement. I haven't done that since I was an ADA, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hari.
Okay, up next, we have application 3-20. Falmouth Housing Trust Incorporated, lots nine and 10, Pam's Way, and East Falmouth. And before we hear this application, just trying to get to my notes. We previously heard this application. Attorney Ament presented it to the board on a previous date, and since then, Attorney Moynihan now represents Falmouth Housing Trust. So before she begins, I know the board has heard a lot, both in testimony from the applicant through Attorney Ament and from other people involved with Falmouth Housing Trust and a number of public comment heard as well. So Attorney Moynihan, actually, I didn't even realize what time is. It's 9:50. We need to vote. It's well past 9:30, but we need to vote to continue the hearing. Just as a matter of housekeeping, does anyone want to make that motion?
So I'll make a motion to continue the hearing to 10:30.
Okay, motion was made by Bob and seconded by Ken. Roll call vote for all of us. James?
James Morse, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Ken?
Ken Foreman, aye.
Scott? Oh, you're muted, Scott.
Scott Zlinski, aye.
Thank you, Scott, and TJ Hari, aye. So Attorney Moynihan, thank you for allowing us to have that procedural vote real quick.
And Mr. Moderator, just for the record, so the voting members listed on this are are you, Ken Foreman, me, Ed Van Kuren, and Mary Berry.
Thank you, Bob. And Attorney Moynihan, I'm sure you have a presentation to make, and we would appreciate it if you could hit on any new points and especially if you, if you could stick to the zoning issues involved with this application.
Oh, yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening and thank you for all your work. I'd like to ask if Attorney Bob Ament could be admitted, who represents the property owner, as well as the housing trust representatives, Karen Visonan and Joanne O'Sullivan.
Go right ahead whenever you're ready, Attorney Moynihan.
Okay, all right, so it's a little bit of a change here. I was not involved in the last hearing. The housing trust asked me to get involved on their behalf as their counsel in this matter. Attorney Ament represents the property owner. He should be on the hearing, but I'm not exactly sure where he is, but time is tight, so I will get going. So things that are new, I know I did file a lengthy submission letter for the board. Did anybody not get a chance to review that? Anybody that's a voting member? I don't see Mary up. Is she still with us?
Oh, Mary's with us. She's right there.
You may have to slide your screen.
Okay, got it. Okay, so I'm gonna just share my screen and so I wanted to just show you something that when I was going through the file materials, I didn't think really came out at the last hearing to any great extent. This is a copy of the subdivision plan that was approved. And so really, the central issue here appears to be, is there a nonconforming use? Town council has said, if the board answers that question in the affirmative, then the board has discretion under 240-3 to modify this special permit. So that is the central question, I think, for the board to answer. Town council has not said in his opinion that it is not a nonconforming use. He's given some guidance to the board, but he's essentially said, that's the question for you to answer. So if we look at this subdivision plan, I've highlighted the note, but I've also blown it up here. So this is the note that was on the 2004 plan. Lots nine and 10 are bonus lots approved under section 24138 of the Falmouth zoning bylaw and subject to conditions 1 and 2 of the decision of the Falmouth Planning Board. That, I think, is very significant because we have been talking about this special permit approval in terms of the planned residential development provisions of the zoning bylaw. But this plan, this subdivision plan as a whole was actually approved under section 24138 of the zoning bylaw. That is the fee in lieu of units section that you've heard so much about and you've seen so much about. The fact that that section no longer exists and was repealed has to mean that this subdivision is a nonconforming use, that we have a nonconformity here. There really can't be any other result because, as you know, in the framework of zoning, we have conforming uses and we have nonconforming uses. There's really nothing in between unless it's illegal. So if it's not conforming, it's nonconforming. And I think that that provision on the subdivision plan is something that's really important when you look at what section of the bylaw this plan was approved under. It was approved under section 24138, which no longer exists. That means that this plan as presented could not be approved under the current bylaw, could not be approved as shown. So the planning board now has said or indicated that, you know, they might want to look at this again. They had said in 2019 that they didn't have any jurisdiction over this. So here we are. In the 2019 decision, I apologize, I'm just trying to find it here. They had indicated that the it's no longer within the authority of the planning board to apply it to a new subdivision plans or modify conditions of the previously approved subdivision plan. That was in January of 2019. So we know under Mass General Laws, section nine, that that decision of the planning board is a final decision. It was filed with the town clerk. It wasn't appealed. We know it's a final decision. So what does that mean? You know, for, in terms of what the planning board may or may not do. First, they have to get over the hurdle of apparently giving up their authority. Second, they have to get over the hurdle of the finality of their decision under Mass General Laws. And would the planning board even do anything different? We know that some members had indicated on Tuesday night that they felt nothing should change. So any review like that could take time and expense, and more importantly, it may not happen at all. It may not happen at all. All that the planning board has said to date is that they would be willing to discuss it again. So that is not in the best interests of affordable housing. What's in the best interests of affordable housing is to apply the flexibility that this board has to find, make the requisite finding and modify the condition of the special permit. That would allow for these funds to be freed up right away. And it's important to keep in mind that if funds go to the Affordable Housing Fund that the town has, those funds are not made available to finance projects. They are paid after projects are completed. So the affordable housing developer, whether it's a nonprofit or a for-profit, that developer has to come up with the money somehow first. Then after the project is completed, they go to the Affordable Housing Fund and they apply for some sort of reimbursement or pay down. But the developer has to find the money in the first place. So there's costs and expense involved in interest, in carrying costs for land. If this money is free- If this money is freed up and provided to the Falmouth Housing Trust as we've requested, they can leverage that money. They can save time and expense in getting these projects financed. They may not have to borrow as much or at all. So it's a really important distinction to understand that having these funds go into the housing trust to try and finance these projects that they're working on at this point in time is really significant. So I think that it's also important here to note and Attorney Amant may have touched on this before, but and I've touched on it, how important this application is to many, many people. The housing trust has worked for about a year and a half on this project, garnering support from the neighborhood association, from the other housing agencies in the community and has brought that to you. We know that the courts have said, and I've given you that case law, that this issuance alone of this special permit qualifies as a prior nonconforming use. And that's really the central issue. I think that you can easily answer that question in the affirmative. I think you can also say to yourself, how can it be anything else but a nonconforming use, which is really an important question. And I think you can apply the flexibility you have as town council has said under two forty dash three to modify this condition. We've given you or I've given you in the materials, I think a lengthy condition that's a lot of thought has been put into it to try and address some of the things that we think that maybe you would be concerned about. And with that, I would ask you for your consideration of that and hope that you'll agree that you can apply your flexibility here to assist with affordable housing right now at this time. So, thank you.
Thank you Attorney Moynihan. And I believe
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question of Attorney Moynihan?
Sure. Sorry, I was just having a technical difficulty there. Whenever someone turns on or off full screen, my screen disappears, so.
So Attorney Moynihan, I'm just looking for a clarification. So you just mentioned that the planning board didn't have the authority to modify the permit according to what you showed. So if they didn't have the authority to modify the permit, did they have the authority to extend the permit the way they did?
Well, they seem to believe that they did have the authority to extend the permit. I said in my submission that, you know, our position was that the special permit had been exercised anyway. That the law had said that the special permit was still valid. And that regardless of what the planning board did or didn't do, the special permit still is valid. So I'm not really sure if it's significant or not, if they had the authority to do it. The fact is they did it and it wasn't
I'd like to add a bit to that. The original two thousand and four special permit specifically authorized the planning board to extend the time in which to make the payment and therefore be able to build on those lots for good cause. And the planning board therefore had the authority to do it. They weighed the question of whether they could do it so far after the initial three years that they gave themselves in the original decision stated and decided that they could because there was no statement that the application for the extension had to happen within the three years. So the planning board found good cause to grant the extension. And I think a bit of that was because the planning board last year really would like to see funds raised for affordable housing through this project. What the planning board decided in January of two thousand and nineteen that it could not do was change the terms. See, it was not changing. The planning board didn't change the terms. They had the authority to grant the extension in the decision itself. But they passed on the invitation to change the same. They couldn't do it. And that's why we're before the Board of Appeals because if we have a nonconforming use, and I think Attorney Moynihan's presentation on that is very persuasive, then it's the Board of Appeals that has authority to make modifications to the terms of exercise of a nonconforming use. These two lots in questions are not buildable today except because of that special permit. That subdivision was approved by a separate special permit prior to the bonus lot special permit. It was approved as a sixteen lot planned residential development by a separate special permit recorded at the registry of deeds. And then the planning board approved the extra two lots. Those lots can only be built upon because of that special permit. That's the use that that special permit allowed. It's a nonconforming use because today that special permit could not be granted.
Thank you Attorney Amant. Anything else Bob?
No, that's it for now.
Any other questions from the board? See, just again on this application, we have myself, Ken, Bob, Ed and Mary. Ken, anything?
No, I think they've made the argument. As I recall it, there was a bit of a hang up last time about who the whether the granting of the right to to supervise the affordable housing construction to basically take responsibility for that needed to fall to the town or needed or could go to the Falmouth Housing Trust. That was really the issue.
Mary, anything?
If I may, I think, Mr. Chairman, that we have addressed that in our written materials that and we've also shown that in two thousand and four and to the current date, the housing trust is an approved local housing fund. So it qualified at that time. It qualifies today and that was determined in the Robert Pena case, a two thousand and two decision of the zoning board. So I don't think there really is any issue there as to qualification. And certainly, again, the discretion here is within the Board of Appeals, not the planning board, under the zoning bylaw.
Mary, anything?
Can I just ask one other follow up there?
Sure, go ahead Ken.
So Laura, you feel that the discretion is with us even though it was a special permit issued by the planning board?
Correct. And it's because the bylaw was repealed. So the original special permit was issued under a repealed bylaw by the planning board. Since the bylaw no longer exists, you have to go to two forty dash three. The special permit granting authority is now the zoning board of appeals. And in order to change or alter the special permit, it has to be the zoning board of appeals. And I've given you examples in my materials, no different than any other situation where the planning board is the original special permit granting authority and the bylaw changes. And now it becomes not a different situation and the zoning board of appeal steps in. So again, what town council has said, if you go back to his memo, if the board finds the nonconformity here, which we feel you clearly can, then the board has the discretion to apply two forty dash three to change this condition. It's very simple.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you Ken. Ed, any questions?
Yeah, my understanding is that the town council on Tuesday said that it should be done by the planning board. I thought that was all, you know, that was his latest addition of where we're standing. But why is the planning board doing it based on what Frank, the town council said on Tuesday?
Well, I think you have to look at that very carefully, sir. I mean, there's nothing in your record to that effect. I watched that meeting of the planning board. There was some material that was apparently discussed, but it was not disclosed. It was not in the public record. I think there is quite frankly, an open meeting issue there. You know, if there is something more, we have not seen it. This board has not seen it. And it hasn't been disclosed. So you have potential hearsay or secondhand information being told to planning board members or to your staff or even maybe you. But the bottom line here is that you are charged with your quasi judicial function of looking at the evidence in your record. And the evidence you have in your record is a legal opinion from your counsel who says that gives you some guidance, asks you to answer the question of the nonconformity. And if you answer in the affirmative, you can modify this condition under two forty dash three. So that's what you have before you.
Thank you Attorney Moynihan.
Okay, thank you.
With us tonight, we also have the town planner Tom Bott and Charlotte Harris from the planning board. And I'll just I'll just leave it for Attorney Bott, I'm sorry, Mr. Bott first. If you had any comment regarding this application.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, first off, town council's legal opinion is not a public document. And that's not typically shared particularly before a meeting with anyone other than staff and the board. So if I can give a little background here, the first record I have regarding this these bonus lots is from March two thousand and eighteen, which is about two months before I was hired. So on April ten, two thousand and twenty, following the April ninth hearing, the county that the ZBA last had, council called me about Mr. Moore's request for follow up information to the zoning board of appeals. Since that time, town council Frank Duffy Norine Stockman, the zoning administrator, had multiple discussions that culminated in the planning board's meeting on May twelfth. Council issued a new internal memorandum on about May twenty third. On April twenty eighth, I received an email from Mr. Shamsi asking if the two of us could discuss the bonus law. After receiving assurances from both Mr. Shamsi and his attorney Bob Amant, I spoke with Mr. Shamsi on the evening of May sixth. I spoke with the chairman of the planning board the following week prior to assembling the agenda for the planning board. And council and I continued to work on a member for the planning board up until Monday of the planning board meeting. I spoke with Attorney Amant just prior to the planning board meeting to give him a heads up about what the board was going to be discussing. And that was essentially council's revised opinion that the board, the planning board did in fact have the authority.
Mr. Chairman, I think we have a point of order here, sir. I think
It depends in terms of the condition. Do I have the floor, Mr. Chairman?
I think we have a point of order, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
And why would that be Attorney Moynihan?
I think we have an open meeting law issue here. I can pull up the statute. But clearly discussion at this meeting of documents or legal opinions that are not in the record and have not been disclosed to the public is a violation of the open meeting law. I have the statute right here. And there is no privilege here.
The documents of the town have a memo from the town planner dated March thirteenth. The copy to town council?
That's not town council's legal opinion. We've asked, I've asked for that legal opinion and I've been told it's privileged. So number one, I haven't been allowed to see it. It's not in the public record. And now we're having testimony being brought at this hearing discussing a revised legal opinion. That's an open meaning law issue, sir.
As I said, I don't think council's opinion is a public document. So what the zoning board of appeals
Then it should be disclosed.
Is essentially a memo that recounts the planning board's discussion and vote of May twelfth. And that meeting stated that the planning board through the planning staff will review the Sunrise Estates planning board decision and work with town council to assess how the decision can be restructured and whether that entail a new planning board permitting process. As Frank said in the memo that I believe you received, it's a very unusual case with no clear precedent to follow. And since town council has done this previous research.
Mr. Chairman, again, just a point of order, just so I make sure, this we have not voted to release any privileged information from town council. If you decide you want to do that and then somebody wants to discuss it, that's one thing, but discussing something that we haven't released yet, I do think could be a violation of open meeting. So I just, either you can rule on it or you can check with the administration, but I just don't want to go over anything at this point that could be perceived as an open meeting violation.
No, and I agree with you Bob and Norine, I'll just defer to you and my apologies because I don't have the, you know, Bob, you have the physical file in front of you. You know, regarding town council's opinion.
So the only correspondences I've had from town council were privileged opinion. There was nothing that was specified to be shared.
So again, Mr. Chairman, if there's going to be further discussion of privileged information, we would first have to vote to release at which point they could discuss. But if we're not voting to release, the comments have to be kept from the legal privileged opinion and to other matters of the subject.
Right. And my apologies because we're in a virtual world here. There's a previous opinion from town council. And I believe the town planner might be referencing another opinion?
Correct.
Correct. That's the April twenty third memorandum from town council to town planner Norine Stockman. Title, the first line says, "This memorandum is discussion purposes only and not intended to be distributed beyond the immediate party."
So in order to discuss, we would have to vote to release. If we don't have a vote to release, then right now we don't discuss that until there's a vote to release.
Correct. And then on top of that, I think Mr. Bott, were you referencing another?
No.
Opinion from town council or was it just that?
No, no. That is the opinion from town council. Essentially, his initial opinion was the board did not have, the planning board did not have the authority to change the terms of the deal. After doing some research, essentially
Are we discussing this?
A point of order, yeah.
Can I just, so the issue now is whether we want to grant want to make this public, the opinion we received. Is there a, how does the board feel about that? Is there a reason why we want to keep it secret?
And again, we're referencing the April twenty third memo. It's not any other conversation or anything else reduced to writing that department heads may or may not have had with town council.
I don't have any issue with sharing it. I mean, the objective here is to create some affordable housing, one way or another.
So if we do vote to release it, which is fine, we would release it. We would continue the date. So the parties have time to review. And then at that next date, we would be able to discuss.
That would certainly seem to conform with any of the open meeting law issues and Laura's brought that up. And you brought it up.
Now, town council did testify at our previous meeting. If the town Now, town council did testify at our previous meeting. If the town planner wants to discuss anything that was part of his testimony at the meeting, um, he could do that.
Mm-hmm.
But at this point, I would be in favor of releasing town council's opinion, which would allow the release. And at that point, at our next continued meeting, we would then be able to discuss.
Well, I'm happy to make that a motion.
So I will second.
So the motion was made.
I support that.
Thank you, Ed. So that motion was, uh, made by Ken both, so I guess the motion would be to, to release the memo to the parties.
Yes, and then, and then continue.
Continuing the hearing.
Discussion after there's been time to consider the release, the, the, the material is.
So just for the record, the housing trust, um, purchase and sales agreement will expire June twelfth. Um, so we started this April ninth, we got continued to May fourteenth. Um, it is unfortunate that, you know, this, this information just isn't provided i- in advance, you know, I, I mean, if it's legal opinion. But aside from that, we're now in a position where I guess if the board is going to continue the hearing, that we're under a pretty significant timeframe.
I understand that Attorney Moynihan, and I know that past practices before town boards were if we received a, uh, opinion from town council, then that would be released immediately. Uh, recently, we've received word from town council that uh, it's essentially attorney client privileged, it's privileged information that the board cannot release to any party at all unless we vote upon it. So if.
Wouldn't say cannot, uh, I'd say isn't required to unless we decide we want to.
Uh, unless we make the decision to release.
Yeah.
So that's where it's.
You have to explicitly vote to release. It's not automatically given.
Correct.
Uh, you know.
That's what we're considering right now is, is the, a vote to explicitly release.
So regarding the timeframe, because Ms. Moynihan just mentioned, um, that June date. Unfortunately, our June eleventh date is now full and our next date available is June twenty-fifth.
All right, so it's June eleventh's full and it's, sorry, I'm just looking at our dates here. It would, it would have to be June twenty-fifth, Bob.
June twenty-fifth is the next available.
All right.
Can I have an opportunity?
Be an extension of your PNS?
Well done.
Well, that would be up to Mr. Ament's client. So that would be a real shame if it couldn't be, obviously, because it's been a year and a half here. So, um, and, and as, as we know, this was before the planning board in January of two thousand nineteen, so it's now been quite a while there and now seems to be coming back again, um, involving the planning board, so, um.
If I could point out, in January of two thousand nineteen, the planning board was asked to, uh, modify the decision. And at that time, uh, based on town council's advice, uh, their decision was that they could not do so. And then a few months ago, I think it was the beginning of March, town council issued, uh, to you an opinion that us said that if you found that it was a nonconforming use, and I think that it's clear that it is, then the board would have the authority to, the zoning board, have the authority to, to make changes. The standard would simply be the usual standard for nonconformances. Whether the, uh, proposed changes are or are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood uh, than the, um, existing nonconformance. Well, the existing nonconformance is such that nothing is going to be done with those lots because you couldn't raise the money necessary to satisfy the uh, portable housing obligation and provide clear, uh, title. And one result of that is that the septic system designed for an eighteen lot subdivision or at least sixteen of the lots that were to be hooked up to it is operating at less than the full capacity and will operate better if the additional lots are, are provided. Uh, the town will get, we estimate eleven thousand dollars a year of tax revenue if houses are built on those lots. Um, the neighborhood wants these lots built upon. Um, and the planning board's already decided that the lots are suitable for, um, building on. And they obviously made that decision because they had to under the um, now repealed zoning bylaw in two thousand and four. And they obviously made that decision again in January of two thousand, uh, nineteen. Uh, everything about this proposal is a benefit. It is not substantially more detrimental. It is a nonconforming use. And despite the uh, apparent uncertainty and change of mind going back and forth by town council on this issue, ultimately, it's the zoning board of appeals which has to make this decision. The zoning board of appeals is the appeals board. It's the place to go to solve problems like this.
Thank you, Attorney.
Delegate your authority to, uh, to town council. Yes, he can give advice and he has given advice.
Attorney Ament, thank you. I, I hate to cut you off, but we are at ten thirty. We did have a vote to extend the hearing till ten thirty. Thank you, Attorney Ament. Uh, which leaves us.
Mister Chairman, I just, I have one quick question to Mister Hamed. Is your client willing to do an extension so that we can continue this to June twenty-fifth?
I'm not able to, um, make that, uh, commitment uh, at this time, and I'm sure it's something that the housing trust and my client, oh, will discuss. Right, my client certainly is interested in having this deal with the, um, housing trust work out, but we will, I, I can't make that commitment at a meeting like this.
Okay, so Mister, Mister Chairman, so Mister Chairman, we have two things to handle then right now. First, we have to take a vote, a roll call vote in order to release the memo that we received. And then if we agree to do that, then I would make a motion to continue the hearing to our next available date, which is June twenty-fifth. Um, I would not be interested in voting on this, this evening at this point, no matter what the discussion was, because unfortunately, the planner's discussion of a privileged memo, I think, does have an effect on the current hearing, so um, I would make a motion to do a roll call vote.
Before you do that, Bob, can you make a, and I hate to take this step by step, but three separate votes, one to continue the, the time issue, one, uh, two to release the information and three, uh, continuance, if that's in order, please.
Yeah, so, uh, and, and first, uh, I will make a motion to continue past ten thirty because we are now past ten thirty, just so we don't have an issue with that.
We, we, we have, we, we, procedurally, Mister Chairman, we have a motion with a second on the floor. We, we either need to table that to do, put motion number, you know, Bob's motion and then take it up again.
Yeah, I, I think that Mister Chairman, if I may, if the motion doesn't carry to release the memo, then there's no point in having a continuance unless the board wants a continuance for some other reason, right? So I think that should be the first motion. If that motion carries, then it's a matter of whether, whether there's going to be a continuance of the hearing to have time to address it. But certainly if that motion doesn't carry, then there can't be any discussion of that memo. And I agree with Dugan, that we've, there already has been discussion of it on the record improperly.
Thank you, Attorney Moynihan. And as, uh, Ken, you pointed out, and thank you for bringing that up. I got lost in the conversation. There is a motion on the floor to release town council's memo. Uh, that was made by you, Ken, and for the life of me, I can't remember who the second.
Second.
I seconded.
Thank you, Bob. Roll call vote to release town council's memo to the parties, um. Ken, roll call vote.
I, Ken Foreman.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed, Dan, Kieran, aye.
Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. So, uh, we will release town council's opinion, uh, to council.
And now a motion to continue to June twenty-fifth.
Second.
All right, motion to continue this, uh, this hearing to June twenty-fifth. That was made by Bob and seconded by Ken. Roll call vote, Ken?
Uh, Ken Foreman, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed, Dan, Kieran, aye.
Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. Uh, so the hearing is continued to June twenty-fifth and town council's opinion will be released to council.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Good night, all.
Good night. Thank you.
Night.
Yep.
Guess I'll just have to check the video and see if I heard what I heard correctly. Um, it is ten thirty-four at this point. We do, uh, have additional items on our agenda. Does anyone want to make a motion to continue uh, tonight's hearings?
Uh, motion to continue to go to our open meeting formation.
Uh, to what time?
I mean, I mean, to, uh, oh God, ten fifty?
Very good. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second.
All right, motion continued to ten fifty. That was made by Bob and seconded by Scott. Roll call vote, James?
James Morse, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed, Dan, Kieran, aye.
Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Ken?
Ken Foreman, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. All right, so we are continuing everything to ten fifty. Uh, uh, first on our open meeting agenda, we have voting the minutes from April thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Has everyone had a chance?
That's to be tabled.
Oh, very good. Tabled.
Save you the trouble.
Thank you very much, Noreen. That will be tabled the next meeting. Up second, we have reviewing the draft decision with possible vote for application sixteen dash twenty, Andre, two oh nine Courier Road in East Falmouth. Does everyone had a chance to review that application or that draft decision?
Yes. Uh, I, I read it and I'm satisfied.
Bob, you in the best position to remind me who the voting numbers are on that application?
Uh, to give you a minute. Actually, Noreen, do you have it just on the, uh, decision?
Uh, yeah, let me check.
I don't have that file.
Okay, I've got TJ, I've got Ken, I've got Bob, I've got Ed and Mary.
All right, myself, Ken, Bob, Ed and Mary. All right, and we've all had a chance.
Review it and I'm okay with it.
So I'd make a motion to accept the draft decision on sixteen dash twenty, Andre, two oh nine Courier Road, East Falmouth.
All right.
Second, second it's.
Motion to approve as drafted, made by Bob and seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, Ken?
Ken Foreman, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed, Dan, Kieran, aye.
Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. Uh, so that passes unanimously. Up next, we have review the draft decision with possible vote for application eighteen dash twenty, Tam, eight Blacksmith Shop Road in West Falmouth. And if someone could kindly remind me the voting members on that application, please.
I was not. I abstain. They could, by process of elimination.
I do remember that. Thank you. Uh, so it was myself. Ken, you were there. Bob? Ed and was it?
I think it's Scott.
Scott. So I have that right, myself, Ken, Bob, Ed and Scott?
Yes, that's correct.
Very good. And I believe there were some revisions proposed by the app then. And were there any proposed from the board as well?
Yeah, I did add some revisions. They were incorporated into the decision.
Very good.
So I'm good with it.
And everyone's, everyone's good with the draft as, as currently drafted?
Yes, I am.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Latest version was this afternoon.
So I make a motion to approve the draft decision for eighteen dash twenty, Tam, eight Blacksmith Shop Road, West Falmouth.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion approved was made by Bob and seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, Ken?
Ken Foreman, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed, Dan, Kieran, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. And that passes unanimously. Hey, up next, we have board discussion with possible vote to grant the authority to the zoning administrator regarding requests for outdoor seating. Uh, so, uh, Noreen and I have shared emails back and forth. This goes back uh, a few weeks now. And, uh, we've received word from our friends in the restaurant industry in Falmouth that they've been, uh, kicking around the ideas of uh, making pop-up tents, um, similar to what La Cucina has and what we've approved through them in the past. Uh, of course, there's been a lot of regulatory hurdles such as the ABC, not only the zoning board involved in, uh, some applications under the bylaw, uh, but through the selectmen and, and other things as well. Uh, so just dealing with, uh, the COVID nineteen world that we're now in, uh, trying to allow tents like that, that does fall under, uh, the board's purview uh, under the applicable, applicable zoning bylaw. And, uh, just for an idea I threw out there, if we could help in any way, shape or form uh, to reduce the amount of time necessary for these, uh, applications, uh, essentially with a, a lot of our uh, seasonal restaurants, they're opening up either shortly or, uh, they, they are in the process of being opened up. Uh, and they're looking to serve the public in some way, shape or form for this summer. And, uh, we don't exactly have guidance from the governor in terms of seating capacities or anything like that. Uh, but again, just to reduce the regulatory uh, issues, uh, that these applications present, I thought it would be appropriate to have at least a discussion and a possible vote uh, to grant authority to Noreen, who is the zoning administrator, to approve these things administratively.
So I can just give you a quick update. We had a Zoom conference today with, uh, town council, town administration, uh, planning, myself, um, chamber of commerce, chief of police, everyone except my mother. And there is concern about whether there is an authority to circumvent the process of a special permit. That it may be that there's not a way to condense that time. So there was not a resolution specified from the meeting today. Uh, there was optimism. Oh, excuse me, there were two members of the board of selectmen there as well. Um, so was talk about, um, waiting for the governor's announcement on Monday. Uh, the board of selectmen are also meeting Monday night. They are also asking, uh, the chamber of commerce to reach out to various establishments to gain further ideas. You know, whether it would be something about closing down part of Main Street or something for some period of time to provide for seating, which tends to be a difficult scenario. So at this time, there's not a firm direction as to how they're gonna go. So I could probably defer the board granting authority at this time.
All right, and just.
Can I ask you a question though?
Absolutely.
Uh, so I, I presume you said everyone was there with your mom. So board of health was represented, yes?
Uh, actually, the board of health was not present, but. Uh, actually, the Board of Health was not present, but, uh, Scott has been included. I mean, he's necessarily, um, over-enrolled right now.
Right.
His other requirements. Um, but he is familiar with conversation. Um, again, he is looking to see what the governor specifies. And then there will necessarily be, uh, if there is outdoor seating, there will be specifications about how that takes place.
Right.
What distances will be, how things will be kept clean. So there's many layers to this.
We're only voting to give Noreen the opportunity to make that decision.
Right, and I, I think.
So whatever, she'll know what the parameters are. This will, this will streamline having to wait two weeks to give her that authority, right?
Absolutely. Well, if she doesn't want it right now, then I think we should wait.
I would be.
But I, I'm sympathetic to your perspective, which is that we want to make it, uh, we, we don't want to make a special permit from the planning, uh, zoning board an impediment. So long as, and this, I just would think we would want to include language that says, "So long as appropriate health guidelines are observed," or something like that.
Yeah, I think what town council's opinion was, was that there is not a way to abbreviate the special permit process. In other words, under the law, there's not a way that I can wave a magic wand and exclude the process of filing and public hearing that is required. So, absent some emergency legislation that could assist us in some way, we don't have the way to do that right now.
But we've always had administrative approval.
It's different because I, I, it seems like right now that the problem is the legal process that you're required to do the advertising, you're required to notify. And unless that is bypassed somehow, even, even if you wanted the administrator to do it, they, they can't.
Right, and I did explain to the Board of Selectmen especially that there was not a way to shorten the zoning board of appeals process. In fact, we do have actually an, already a filing for outdoor seating with one party that would look to do it on an annual basis. Uh, but I did also explain to them that by the time they've gone through the Board of Appeals process, they will have essentially lost the summer season, which is what they're looking for help with right now.
Exactly. So it was my initial idea to give Noreen, uh, administrative approval. And then, like she said, uh, town council pointed out that we, as the law stands now, we can't circumvent, uh, the special permit process. But maybe, uh, our friends on Beacon Hill can pass emergency legislation, uh, circumvent that if they.
If, if not, could the town look at a group venue space? For example, Town Hall Square, which they control, uh, back of the town hall. Some of these rec fields, we have all these rec fields that, you know, aren't being used with a lot of these sporting activities. If the town could set something up as a group effort in these areas, you wouldn't need as many hearings. And if you could encompass multiple restaurants, uh, multiple takeout areas, that might be at least an easier way to have less applications with more space. I know there was issues with, I thought the library lawn would be great, but now you have issues where that's under control of the trustees and it can only be used for nonprofit events. So, you know, there's all these other things that come up. If the town could look at spaces they control in something, again, like a group venue, uh, the, the, uh, fairgrounds used to do the, um, the food truck event. You know, maybe some of these restaurants can get together and do something similar to that with, um, you know, with their goods and services and just do it in a larger venue, tents, wider spaces, uh, picnic tables. But if you could do more large, larger spaced areas that the town control, I think that would just cut down on applications. And if they can't get through all these other, all this other red tape, at least they could get through on something like that.
Well, I'm sure that if you, any specific ideas you have would be ideally shared with the selectmen because they will be bringing, taking this up on the 18th. And so, you know, our insight could be helpful for them.
Anyone else have, uh, any other opinion, any other ideas to toss in there? Seeing none, uh, up to next board discussion, management of a butter participation for Zoom hearings. I don't know if anyone has anything new regarding that.
I think my purpose behind putting that on, and this is again just for board's thought process, is that, you know, when, particularly when we're hearing 40Bs, but even tonight, I think you started to see it with the discussion on the Falmouth Housing Trust case, that, uh, it's very difficult to manage multiple people trying to participate in the hearings. And as you move forward and you start to have some new 40Bs filed, you're gonna encounter that same problem.
Thank you, Noreen. And as far as anything new that's being, I don't know if anything's been filed recently, but do we, we have the power to hold that off even though we're meeting virtually? In terms of scheduling hearing day?
Well, I think town, town council has suggested that it is important that regardless of the type of petition before you, that you are handling them equally or treating them the same way. So in other words, we can't obviously not hold hearings on something that might be controversial because there might be many neighbors, but here are the ones that are not controversial.
Right.
But, you know, it's just gonna be something that the board's gonna need to navigate.
When would we be held to specific deadlines? Like when the governor changes something? Is it the date the governor, you know, opens up and now that, that leeway is gone from us? When, when, what's that shut-off date?
So right now, I think, um, the way the language of the law is specified is that you sort of ha- have a grace period for the period of the emergency, which will extend an additional 45 days beyond. So, you know, my thought for you was that you don't wanna stop actions such that you wind up so far behind that you're holding a hearing every night trying to play catch-up. That being said, um.
So if we start, if you start an application during the state of emergency, and let's say the state of emergency ends two weeks after, do we still get that extra, the days that we started with?
Totally, so the other part right now is that where there's a stay on the tolling of time, you would have the opportunity to extend, you know, there was, uh, if you were expected to hold a hearing within 180 days, it's my understanding that you can extend that. You know, it's preferable, I'm sure, to have consent of the applicant, but, um, by law, you can manage it that way if you want. So, you know, maybe that the case that you're hearing fewer applications, I know, you know, we spent a lot of time tonight and the past nights. So, you know, maybe something where you really wanna cut back on the number of cases and people will have to wait longer. If for thought, you don't have to decide tonight.
Thank you, Noreen. Uh, can we put this on as a, just another discussion for our next hearing? Just in case if anyone comes up with anything new?
I, I would, uh, just as in a caveat, um, I would like to have town council review tonight's meeting because there were allegations of open meeting violations. Just have them review it.
That's a good idea, Bob.
And, and then, uh, I guess talk to us after what the situations are.
Now, Bobby?
Yeah.
Now, now, town planner made a statement and he gave testimony. We didn't interact with any of that. I mean, as far as.
No, but what, but what happened was.
Any, any questions asked by this board? And you, and then you stopped it, or you made the motion to stop that. So I think the issues with, with him and not us at the moment.
Well, it, it, it is. The problem is he, he started releasing information, our, you know, privileged information during one of our open hearings. And the applicants didn't have any of that information in advance. And then he was pushing whatever his discussion was. But they're right, if someone else is discussing something that we have, yeah, it was privileged and we're not discussing it. I, I'm actually kind of surprised that that came from another department because everyone's pretty much aware at this point through town council, what's privileged unless it's released. But my biggest issue with why I want him to review it is because you now have two, um, legal councils, um, making a public opinion that the meeting was now violating, you know, violating an open meeting law. And I just wanna make sure that town council's aware of it. And if he feels there was a violation, he needs to address it.
I understand. I, I would say that very little information got out before Laura objected and we.
Right, which is, yeah, which is good.
Discussion.
Which, you know, we'll, we'll see what town council says, but, you know, there are remedies to any potential violation of the open meeting law, which is, or per, I don't, I'm not saying we did was right or wrong, but, uh, we stopped testimony in its tracks and then we made a vote. So we'll see what town council has to say about that.
And it's tough with, it's.
And whether that was an appropriate remedy.
It's tough with these Zoom meetings because when you're speaking, um, you know, it's not like we're, we're meeting in the room downstairs. You can immediately stop someone and they stop. On these meetings, even if you say, can you hold up a minute? Half the time, they're still in the middle of the sentence, you've got delayed, you know, technological issues. So it's, it's just hard to control the meeting sometimes just because of the technology we're dealing with.
Absolutely, Bob. And, and I apologize to the board. It, it is awfully tough to control hearings, uh, virtually, uh, with our.
I think you're doing fine, TJ. You know, sometimes, sometimes we could, we could move things along a little quicker, but that's, that's the only.
All right. All right, so, uh, board updates, anything? Future agenda items? All right, seeing.
More cases. Always, never end.
Never ending, no end in sight.
Starbucks and Dairy Queen are open.
That's a plus.
Ice cream is an essential function.
All right, so our next hearing is May 28th, May 28th, 6:30.
Yes.
Zoom Town Hall. Uh, thank you, everyone, Noreen, Ashley, board members.
Thank you all.
Falmouth IT, FCTD.
Happy birthday, Bob.
Thank you.
Oh, thought you could get away from meeting without saying happy birthday. Happy birthday, Bob. All right, meeting adjourned.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.